You want to let me know when we're ready?
Go ahead.
All right. All right, welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, December the 21st. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to conduct and handle our city council meetings a little differently than we have in the past for the protection of the public and our city staff. I'm now going to ask our city manager to give a brief explanation to the public. Mr. Hines?
Good evening, Lorenzo Hines, City Manager. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person pursuant to applicable health orders, today's agenda states that we are using audio-only teleconferencing options, which allow the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only. And they should only, or they should be able to use the raise their hand feature option to speak when the mayor announces the time for the general public comment or when a specific item is called if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees also should see a lower hand feature if they change their minds and do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers in person or on the phone provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll now call the meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Papino.
Here.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If you would now all join me in a silent prayer followed by our flag salute. Tina, if you'd like to read our role, our replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at www.zacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Saturday, December 25th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, December 26th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item B, agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do I have anything from council?
I would like to pull item seven, F7?
Council Vandenberg pulling item F7. And I would like to pull item F4 and item nine. So F4 and nine. All right. Let me go ahead and open the, I'm sorry. All right, moving on to item C, public comment. If you are watching online, you'd like to raise your hand on Zoom or you can use the phone number to call in. We are opening the public comment period now. Do we have any written public comment? I'm sorry, any comment in the room?
We do. Ralph Cortez.
Mr. Cortez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, our city council, city staff. Hi. My name is Ralph Cortez, proud resident of Galt. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen. This is regarding the Galt, the Great America Little Town Banner Program, our banner program. Those banners went up around April, May of this year. And since then, I've been told that there's progress being made. Looks like there's approximately 25 to 30 of them that went down for various reasons. So I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. I'm sure, I'm sure we've all seen them. Some of them have come apart and kind of flailing in the wind. And I think one came down near the freeway during the overpass area there. So I just wanted to bring it up. And I understand that their replacements are in. I'm going to say some of them, I don't, I can confirm them all, but I know some replacements are in. And I hope that at some point, you know, we can get out there and get those ones that are down either replaced or addressed. I think the wind, the storms that we had contributed to a good portion of them. But we're proud of those banners. And I just think that hopefully we can get those taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. I know Mike's, Mr. Selling's not in here right now. Do we, could we find out about that? I, I think, I know there was some being replaced in Old Town because of, I don't know, I think it was the way they were installed, there was an issue. And so someone came down, but do we know? Okay.
While Mr. Selling is making its way up, making his way up, we have spoken with the printers of those banners. We have reached an accord with that person and we're currently working with that individual to replace these banners. And I don't know if anything else needs to be said.
No, just a quick update is we got the bill probably, I think it was earlier last week. And so that bill is being processed for the banners, I think it was around $2,600 or so. And I think it was 22 banners is the number that, that I heard. So.
We lost?
Yeah, that we've basically taken down because the seam that our stitching has ripped kind of thing. So, so those are, those are in replacement. So I would say that realistically, they will probably be put up in that first week or so of January, so.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Hines.
I would, Director Selling, the gentleman that we're working with?
Yes, Mr. Dan Gerling.
So, Mr. Cortez, I would suggest you seek out Mr. Gerling and get the story. Okay? Thank you.
All right, do we have any additional comment in the room?
We do not.
Okay, any hands raised online?
No hands raised.
And on the phone?
No.
Okay, so again, if you are wanting to make public comment on the phone, you can use the phone number or you can raise your hand on the Zoom application. I'll give just a few more seconds here, give you the opportunity.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Belier.
That's for ARPA? Do you want that on the agenda? That's on the agenda this evening.
Typically, when you put an item, you're, you speak when that item comes up, not under the general public comment?
Sorry, I didn't see your hand raised.
Any, any hands raised or phone comments?
No.
Okay. All right, well, now close public comment. Move on to item D, presentations. Do we have any presentations this evening?
None this evening.
All right, move on to item E, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is not that much going on last couple of weeks. South Sacramento Conversation Agency Authority, they canceled their meeting. Sacramento Transportation Authority, I attended their meeting on December 9th. And there was the appointment of an independent tax where oversight committee member, her name is Glenda Marsh, for four years. And we also have a closed session. I cannot discuss anything what we did, but this was the evaluation executive director of the transportation performance. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Papino.
I don't have anything to report. None of my boards have met in the last month.
Okay. Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Consumers Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Meeting. They're still set, well, they're selecting banks and still doing the basics, but we do look to be on track to meet our goal in the early part of next year.
All right, thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yes, SACOG meeting on the 16th. Just a couple of items. The chair for next year was selected and it's going to be Sacramento City Councilman Rick Jennings and the vice chair, Sacramento County Supervisor Patrick Kennedy. The SACOG staff released the regional draft park and trails network. We're looking for public input. So if you have any input on that, it was kind of an interesting presentation. There was a map that showed all the trail networks throughout the region and, and what they're proposing, as well as possible connections to different areas, including one connection from our city down south, as well as going up north up the railroad tracks. So doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it's part of the regional plan. So if you have input, SACOG's website and give your input on that. Final versions due out in late March of next year, so. And that's, that was pretty much it.
All right, thank you, sir. I attended, actually, well, Councilman Lozano and I attended an ad hoc committee meeting with Cowace this morning. Don't have anything to report on that, but things are moving along. And I have a youth commission meeting coming up on January the 3rd. And I did attend a adopt a street cleanup with my youth commissioners this last Saturday, which was good, on Lincoln Way. And that's about it. So moving on.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Did we hear from Councilmember Vandenberg?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, just making sure.
Yeah, I went in order this way.
All right.
All right, moving on to item F, our information consent calendar. And it is recommended that items 1 through 9 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. I'm going to open the public comment on the consent calendar, so we'll start that public comment as I read the items. If you wish to raise your hand online or phone in, you may be called upon. The items are going to be F1. Subject is the minutes of the special meeting of November 30th, 2021, and the special meeting of December 6th, 2021, and the regular meeting of December 7th, 2021. Item 2 is going to be receive and file warrants for the period ending December 8th, 2021. Item 3 is going to be consider opting into a settlement agreement with distributors and manufacturer of opioids for the county of Sacramento to receive the city's designated share of a settlement fund. Item 5, AB 361 Resolution, making findings necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings by teleconference. Item 6, the adoption of the Consumers Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. And item 8, receive and file Senate Bill 165, Special Tax Accountability Report for Community Facilities District 2005-1. Do I have any public comment?
I haven't received anything more online.
No more online? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment on this item. I'm looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, and 8.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved 5-0. Next up is item F4. Is the deferral of accounts receivable, write-off reports of uncollectible accounts for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. It's an item that I pulled. I, I just had a couple of questions. I apologize, Mr. Hines, I, it was a busy day and I just got my email up and I, it was a last minute. So I know this is not that big a deal. Just, so we are, so the report for these write-offs, since we're deferring that out for approval, we're not actually writing those things off yet until we do the report?
So let me, let me make it clear. The policy dictates what we write off. It sets the thresholds and we adhere to the policy. This action is merely to show the council, here are the accounts that we wrote off per policy. And so the staff is busy preparing the annual financial report right now, and that's where their efforts are. And we'll bring the report of the write-offs that we took care of this year to council at some point later this fiscal year. But bear in mind, the policy controls what we write off.
Correct. I just, just, I was just trying to clarify that we weren't, we weren't actually, because the fiscal year ended, I was just curious to, making sure that we weren't actually, those hadn't been written off yet.
We're still, we're still preparing our annual financial report.
Okay.
And I'll talk with the staff and we'll, we'll work on the accounts that we need to write off, but we'll follow the policy. And the policy dictates, sets the limits and thresholds for us to write off things.
Okay.
And this is merely an informational report that is shown to the council. It's not, it's, and it's not a report that needs to be approved. It's just informational. Here's what we did per policy, just so you're aware of it.
Okay, that's good for clarity, because I actually understood the policy differently when I read it. I thought it was that we approved those write-offs, but thank you for that. Okay.
Okay.
And I know that we're short in finance staff and you're prioritizing things, so I just want to get clarification on that.
Thank you.
I'd like to move item F4 for approval.
Move.
Actually, I need, do I need to get public comment on that item? Because I pulled several, okay. All right, I'm going to need to see if there's any public comment on item F4. Do we have any hands raised online or on the phone, Tina?
We do not.
Okay. Again, if you'd like to make comment on this particular item, you may do so now. We'll give you a moment to do so. Just so you know, if you do want to comment on any of the items F7 or A9, which will be coming up, you can please, feel free to raise your hand online or call in and we will put you in queue for that. Any hands raised?
No.
No Zoom? Okay. All right, we'll close public comment on this item. Looking for a motion to approve item F4. The deferral of accounts receivable, write-off reports for uncollectible accounts for fiscal year 2021-21.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg. Seconded by Councilmember Papino. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye, approved 5-0. Next up is item F7. The appropriate, appropriate additional contingency in amount of $80,295 for the Walker Park Community Park Phase 2 Improvement, CIP 619B. Mr. Vandenberg, this was your item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I don't want to really belabor the point. I just mostly, we just wanted it spoken in, during the council meeting to, just a brief explanation for the public so that it's public. You know.
Looking for an explanation on what the item is?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Selling Public Works. I apologize, I was kind of in transit. Did, there was a question on the item for the Walker Park contingency?
Yeah, Mike, thank you, sir. I mostly just wanted it out in the public square, why there was an additional request for money made. Just that simple.
Sure, yeah, so just kind of quickly, so on that project, we had a contingency. And to date, we've had a couple of unforeseen items that have come up that have used a great amount of that contingency. I forget how much exactly the contingency was. Let me check my notes here.
Hundred, $109,000.
Hundred and nine thousand. And I think we've used. And let me get to that.
Roughly $60,000, I think.
So. Let's see.
Yes, that's.
About $56,000 is what I'm looking at here. Well, and another 10, so about $65,000. The project is 65% complete, so there's, there's a, about $44,000 remaining in contingency. So with the rain, the 200-year event that we had back in late October, that dumped so much water, the ground has been saturated, we had to do some de-watering. Also, there's, the big thing really is that there's some, what we call expansive soils, clays, if you will. And, and those present a problem because they just don't dry out. They take a long time to dry out. And, and they're really, there is no real structural integrity to those soils. And so you either have to take them out and replace them with other, you know, rock material, aggregate base material, what we call aggregate base. Or there's a few other things you can do. There's some specialty items like GeoGrid, but those are, those are expensive. This is a moderate-sized area. I think it's about 1.7 acres or so. So we worked with the contractor to evaluate options and costs. And, and the most cost-effective option is to do a lime treatment of the area. And so basically, they'll spread lime and then they'll mix it in with like a giant rotator, if you will. And then the lime reacts and, and they compact it and it makes a almost concrete-like hardened surface, which is what you need for something like a parking lot area to support the traffic loading that'll, that'll occur there. So, so that cost to do that is about $80,000. And we only have, like I said, about $44,000 remaining. So what we're doing is requesting the council to consider approving the funding for this change order, that $80,000 or so. And that'll retain the existing $44,000 for any potentially additional unforeseen things that may come up. We're two-thirds of the way through with the project, so we've still got a little bit of time, a little bit of work to do after this. And so just to be able to keep the project moving if something else unforeseen did come up. So, so that's essentially what we're asking for.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Sure.
I thought you had a question. Since this, I do have a couple of questions since you're there. So basically, I mean, the report was pretty thorough, but I just had a question. The, so basically, this is a Mother Nature thing. I mean, this is why?
It's, well, it's really twofold, Mayor. It's a Mother Nature thing with that storm and, and the additional rains that we've had. The soils probably would have been workable otherwise, but they are clay. And, and again, with the traffic loading on a parking area, you want to make sure you have a good foundational base there. Otherwise, it's pay me now or pay me later, and it's going to be a lot more expensive later if we had to go in and repair those areas, you know, after, after we open them up to traffic, so.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know how I feel about contingency when we approve it, but then now we're like already going to go over. So if we don't use that remaining 44, then, so we're allocating $80,000 out of the Quimby funds and then if we don't use the remaining 44, then that will reimburse the, where the $80,000 came from?
Yes, so that 44 would go back into Quimby fund balance for future projects, correct?
Okay. Well, I'm disappointed that we're running over. I understand the wa, I mean, when I saw that, I was thinking of the rain, but it's just like, projects just seem to always, you put those contingency there and it's like, it seems like never fails and they're always going for that, so. Quimby, so Quimby, just to clarify, just since we're on Quimby. So Quimby can be used for, Quimby just can't be used for maintenance of existing parks. And the idea of is it to build new parks? And so expanding an existing park is considered a new park and that's?
Correct, yeah, it's essentially for capital expenditures and not for operations and maintenance.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir. That's, that's all the questions I had.
Yep, no problem.
Any questions from council? All right. Okay, if you have a comment on this, you, you could have raised your hand or on Zoom or call in. You may do so now. This is on the item F7. Is there any hands raised online or on Zoom, Tina?
No public comments.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve item F7. Moved, moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved 5-0. Moving on to last consent item.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may.
Yes.
I'll redirect back to item F4. I wanted to make a clarification. I believe you had indicated that council did have some authority when it came to these accounts, and you are correct. So on page 2 of the unres, the uncollectible receivables policy, I just wanted to make it clear to the council and to the public that the director of finance is authorized to write off accounts up to $500. The city manager is authorized to write off individual accounts from 500 to 2,499. And then anything 2,500 or over must be approved by the council. And so we will make sure to delineate the first two areas as have been written off by myself. And so we will make sure to delineate the first two areas as have been written off by myself and then the final area that needs council approval. So I just wanted to make that clarification for all of you and for the public listening.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
I thought I remembered something about that, but it was vague. Okay. Moving on to item F9. Again, if you have a public comment on this item, please raise your hand on Zoom or you can turn it to speaker sheet if you're in the room, or you can call in on the phone number. This item is a police vehicle replacement. This is an item that I pulled. I just had a couple of questions. One of them was a legal question. I did ask a city attorney earlier today, but he deferred me to, probably needed to bring it up. So this is, this is Officer Graywall's car that was, we're looking to replace. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My question was about the insur, like, so the insurance is offering only, willing to pay us $27,000 and whatever. So do they not, does insurance typically not reimburse us for all the money that has to be spent to outfit the car? They don't?
So that number is inclusive of what they're willing to pay for the equipment that it takes to replace the vehicle. And the insurance that we have for vehicles that are three years and older have essentially a limit. Cars that are newer than three years have a total replacement option. This car is more than three years old, so the amount that they were giving us, which is about 120% of the market rate, was that 27, 4, 6, whatever that number was in the staff report.
Okay. And then the second was, so just for the public watching, so we're looking at taking some money from our general fund reserve to replace this vehicle. Do, are we not, I mean, this accident was of course not the officer's fault. Are we not pursuing legal? Do we, is that something we don't do or are we?
HR will, is, will handle that through all the things that are going on with that incident in its totality. But that is, I would sense, a multi-year process. So operationally, we need to get repositioned to make sure that we keep the fleet going. And so this, we're addressing this on the front end due to supply chain and vehicle delay issues in terms of getting stuff going versus waiting for the actual budget build in six months.
Okay.
Or approval, excuse me.
So we are pursuing that. Should something come of that, then we'll just reimburse?
Yeah, we are still waiting on the actual CHP final report for the investigation. We have some preliminary information, but not the final report. And that'll be the catalyst to do some other things through the suspect of the accident.
Okay. And then my last question is for Mr. Heinz. Just, I noticed this coming from the general fund reserved, is that, I think this is the only time I ever remember us pulling anything from reserves so far. Is that, is that common to do that? I mean, is there a reason why you just don't pull it from, or do we don't?
Well, it's just, you know, we have to have a good reason to do that. And, and given the incident here and the, given the fact that this was unplanned, this is exactly what the reserve is for and the need to keep the, the PD's fleet up to speed. And as you both mentioned earlier, we are pursuing the insurance claims. Again, the CHP report will help us with that, but our insurance have been made fully aware of everything that's going on and they are at the ready to pursue what they need to pursue in order to make us whole.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
That's all the questions that I have. Does anybody else have a question on this item?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. City manager, so we're short a couple of people in financing.
Yes.
And I can appreciate not wanting to affect the general budget. So my simple question is, those vacancies don't compensate for what we're asking? The funds that they're asking, or is there another specific reason why it's coming out of reserves?
Because the reserves are there for contingencies. And that's why it's coming out of the reserves. And, and when you say finance, are you talking about the department?
Yeah.
Typically, if there's a need in another, in another department, I, I am reluctant to use one department's issues, one department's surplus is to fund another department's issues. In this particular case, because of the circumstances and because we have a reserve for contingencies, I believe it's best that we use the $75,000 there. Now, when it comes to sort of taking care of our internal budget, we'll look at that when we do the mid-year. We'll look at that at the end of the fiscal year. But for right now, the chief needs to get his fleet up to speed and the reserve for contingencies is, which sits in the general fund. And so this is the best place for it.
And just to be clear, we looked at our budget. We do not have the capacity to absorb a $75,000 hit. So that's why we're asking for the expenditure out of the reserves to make it go.
Thank you. What you said makes sense. I just.
Oh, yeah. I understand.
It's good to have it out in the public square. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Chief Collinowski, do you anticipate any like delays with getting this car? I know that it's usually a long process anyways to get the car and then get it outfitted. I know we ran into some problems with the ones we bought. Do you foresee that kind of thing here, Ken?
It's still happening. We actually took delivery of the three Ford Explorers from last year's order, but the supply chain issue specifically with light bars is preventing the, those vehicles from being outfitted. The same thing will happen with this. There's a 24, 26 week build and delivery time on the Ford product, like there is the Dodge. And that coupled with the other parts for upfitting will delay the ultimate deployment of that vehicle. Hopefully, as I mentioned in other venues, and I always plug this, we'll have a equipment replacement fund at some point where this stuff will just become automatic and it won't be stop and go like some of the things are. And so that'll help that process for us. But every time we do it, it's a fresh start on purchasing and programming for that, that purchase. And we're, been dealing with this since August and we're just before you today.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for answering the questions. All right, do we have any public comment on this item? Tina, online?
No hands raised.
Nothing in the room? All right. Looking for a motion to approve item F9, a police department vehicle replacement.
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Vandenberg.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Papino.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Item is approved five to zero. All right, moving on to item G, scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Do we have any this evening?
And this evening.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item H, our regular calendar. The first item is going to be from the city manager's office. Number one is the subject, consider funding allocations for American Rescue Plan Act funds for pool repairs. Receive public input, discuss other possible allocations and provide direction to staff. Mr. Heinz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 11th, 2021, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. It's a $1.9 trillion package with a T. Is intended to combat COVID-19 pandemic, including public health and economic impacts. The city, our city, is scheduled to receive $6.3 million in ARPA funding over the next two years. We've already received $3.174 million in July of this year. And according to the ARPA statute here in the staff report, we give you some general outlines as to what these dollars can be used for. When we presented the item to council back on October 5th, we presented the results of a public survey. And based on that survey, we were able to put together sort of a preliminary funding analysis, which you see here on page three of three. Now, council merely heard the presentation and, and we had a good conversation about ARPA. And so I'm coming back now and asking council if they would be open to appropriating $506,000 for pool heaters and pool replastering. Director Solis is here to give the background for the need of those funding. And he also has some grant dollars that he can, that he's received from another source that will help us, that will help us pay for these expenditures as well. We will come back to the city council as we develop the plans to back, the plans to support the various areas that we've proposed on page three of three. Right now, because of the need and because of the timing, I wanted to get this item in front of you because this, apparently we're sort of in dire circumstances with our pool. And again, Director Solis will give you that information. And, and so Director Solis, I leave it to you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. So we have two issues at our Gore Aquatic Center. One is the heaters. They're over 20 years old and they need to be replaced. We had already had that on the radar and we were going to use Prop 68 per capita funding for that in the amount of 200, nearly $200,000. Another issue came up where our plastering has been pushed back since 2006 and has not been replastered since then. And a typical plaster job will last seven to 10 years. We're way beyond that at this point. We can, we've patched it and continued to patch it. And we're at the point right now that we're not sure that we would pass inspection in the spring. If we don't pass inspection, we will not open. So we feel we're at that time where we need to start, we need to do this. The heaters, we were also tagged by the air quality board. And we were told that we can only run those heaters for two hours per day, which is not enough time to heat that pool sufficiently for our tenants. So we were already on, planning on replacing those at this time. They're, the ones that are, that will meet California regulations are a little expensive. They're in the 400,000 plus range to replace. So we're asking you to, after the $195,000 from the per capita grant, to fund the rest of those two items.
And so Mayor and council members, given the critical nature of this situation in Parks and Rec, and we don't want to be in a situation where we've got to close the pool. And that's, that is, that is, I can tell you, that's the last thing I, I want to see. So the ARPA funding is available. It's, these repairs are one time in nature. And so it fits sort of the philosophical use of these kinds of funds. We would be looking to take those dollars from the revenue loss replacement for 2021, which you see here on page three of three. And those are eligible expenses there. And so we ask for your support. And we have another item related to ARPA funding, which the mayor will, will lay out for us. But I wanted to get, I wanted to have this conversation about the pool and see if you had any questions about the pool. The resolution that you have in front of you is strictly about appropriating these dollars. And so we could get these dollars in the hands of Director Solis, so he can do, he can order the parts, start the replastering process. He's got to work with Public Works on a number of permits and estimates. So time is sort of of the, of the essence in order to get the pool open. What time, when do we usually open the pool?
Right after spring break.
Yeah, so we've.
Open to Public Works. If we can get this approved, we can have that done in time. So just to be clear, we will not open if we cannot replace the, the heaters. We, if you want to roll the dice and say only the heaters, there's a chance that we might not pass, pass inspection just by patching, you know, as we have done for the last five years. We're just at that point right now.
So what you're saying is our pool is a gross polluter with the heaters?
I'm not saying that. Their quality board is saying that.
That's what I meant. That's what you're passing on this. Yeah, when you explained this to me the other day, I was like, really? So, so this is coming, I mean, initially you had presented a budget to us of $1.48 million for general services, revenue loss replacement. So we're just looking to pull this out of that. This isn't even an additional line item, right?
Exactly.
So, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with it. One of the things we want to do is get our facilities up to par. And the pool's been something that's been talked about before. I say if we're going to do it, we use a little bit of Uncle Joe's money to do that. It's just my opinion. So I'm going to open a public comment here in a second. Go ahead and open public comment. If you have a comment on this while the council discusses this item, please raise your hand or call in. Does any of the council have any comment on this?
I just have one question, just as, listening to this. I'm curious if the city has looked into any sort of solar water heating, you know, that would help satisfy what the state likes and perhaps it would be more efficient.
We looked into it several years ago and it wasn't cost efficient at that time, from what I'm told.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, just, I, I will support that because we really need to take care of the pool. But I have a couple of question. Mr. Slade, you said we might be, if we keep the pool like this, the county might be well shut down. How, you know, the last inspection, did you know what kind of violation was?
Yes, the inspectors pointed it out to our maintenance supervisor, Armando Morales. She did point those out to him, yes.
No, but what kind of violation really they can shut down? But they have to have some kind of specific, but say, on the commercial pool, I know that the Sacramento County very strict.
Yeah. It's, the way it was explained to me from Armando Morales was that if at any point you're, somebody can get cut with something from the pool, they will shut you down for a safety reason.
Okay. The other thing is, we're talking about all pool heater. What's your cost? 250 or your, what's your approximate cost? You don't get the, any estimate yet, right? There's the.
Those are engineer estimates from Public Works.
How much?
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor, we, we, the, the actual figures for the pool heater and the figures for the replastering, when I developed this report, I did not put the actual figures in there. But they exceed the amounts that we're, we're asking for. That's why we, that's why we have the extra funding from Prop, under Prop 68. And if you want to, if you want to give me five minutes, I can run back to the computer and get it.
That's fine, that's fine. We can get that later on.
Okay.
Just a rough estimate, one was over 400,000, the other one was over 200,000.
All right. Thank you for the explanation. I will support that.
Well, we're confident that, because even though we don't have exact numbers, you're confident the 506, we think we could get that, those two things done with that and the grant dollars.
Those are engineering estimates, so, I mean, I did not put those numbers together. This is what Public Works does on CIP projects. They go through, evaluate it. And that's the number that they provided us.
I understand that. And I know you're not controlling that, so. Well, again, I, I support this. Does anybody else have any comment on this particular issue with the pool here? No? Okay. Do we have any public comment on the ARPA? You want to go proceed through and then get?
Why don't we, why don't we proceed through and then we'll, we'll have a conversation about the entire item?
All right.
I really wanted to get that item in front of the council because of the immediacy that Armando, I'm sorry, Director Solis was presented with.
Okay.
And so if you, if, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I can just go ahead. The next item, now that we're done with the pool replacement, is council member recommendations. And so the, and so the first recommendation is a litter abatement program. And essentially, it's a developer program to address litter, trash and related enforcement issues in the city of Gault. And attachment B, the staff report was submitted by the mayor. And I'm gonna step back and let the mayor present the program.
Okay, so, yeah, as I, as I presented to my colleagues last meeting, an idea that had been kind of thrown around, not just by myself, but in the community for a few years now, was something I was hoping to try to get started, kind of got sidelined by COVID. And then, of course, our budget issues when it came into office. But this program, just to give you a little bit overview, in my opinion, you know, trash and litter has become quite the epidemic. If any of you have driven around in other cities, our neighbors to the north, south, you'll see that it's, the freeway's littered with it. You could be going to town, you really look around. And I think this, this council as a whole has really been, I think we've all been in agreement that quality of life is a big thing and that quality of life actually is, can touch a number of different topics. But I think one of those topics is the quality of the, of the community that we live in and the cleanliness of our, of our, of our city, the look of our city. And this goes from all the way down from keeping our facilities nice to keeping our parks nice to keeping our streets clean and, and all of that. So over the last 18 months, I felt like this problem has gotten worse, especially with a lot of discarded masks. I think other things that have contributed to this would be a lot of people, you know, getting takeout food, seeing a lot of trash. And I, you know, and I do a lot of community cleanup with various groups, the beautification committee and this last Saturday. And so I've seen, you know, a lot of, around the restaurants. So I think, you know, this, what this does is it affects our quality of life. It decreases community pride, in my opinion. I think it's kind of like the broken window theory, you know, once people see trash, they just think, well, there's already trash in the street, let's just throw some more trash out there. And I'm very disappointed actually to see, even though we did a cleanup on Lincoln Way just this last Saturday, that I drove down today and there was cups and things all over the place. It's just, it literally, it just happened so quickly in a matter. And I, and I feel like we've come to a point where we just cannot no longer rely on volunteer organizations and volunteers, a handful of people, to do this task. And so what I'm looking for here is. And so what I'm looking for here is, um, um, to create a position. Um, I've had some conversation with Mr. Solis and Mr. Hines, and we've kind of brainstormed and spitballed a little bit on this, and we're looking at probably between twenty and thirty hour, probably more like a twenty-eight hour position, um, to be determined on pay and all that. But, um, essentially this position would work on a rotating, uh, schedule, Monday through Friday, um, on a, uh, a map that, uh, Mr. Solis has actually come up with an initial map, um, of, of zoning, kind of based on how they do landscaping. This, this is not going to be deep into the residential areas. This would be mainly our thoroughfares, uh, um, main streets, main, uh, around parks. I know our parks crews already do, they actually, in the parks, but this would be around those areas, medians, um, pretty much all areas of traffic that people would come in our city and, and where we're seeing the most, um, trash and garbage. I feel this is a good example for the rest of the community. I think, uh, we need to lead by example, and, uh, code enforcement has been doing a fabulous job. I want to just give a lot of props to, uh, Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Selling, both of them do an excellent job when there's code enforcement issues, about getting on top of that, and our new code enforcement officer, TJ, has been phenomenal, but it's very difficult. You know, I think we need to be leading by example, and then, um, hopefully that will lead into hand-in-hand working with code enforcement to start some education with businesses and private properties in trying to do a better job. I would eventually like to see this program evolve into, uh, a partnership possibly with our waste provider, um, when they do education about recycling and the schools and stuff. We could have, we can talk about trash and litter and how the city's, you know, leading the way, um, and setting an example in, in our area for other cities to do such a thing, because I don't know that they're doing that. I think we would be the first. Um, so I think I, you know, I think these are good points. I think, uh, the, the cost we're asking for is approximately forty thousand dollars. I think it's a small drop in the bucket for, um, you know, uh, what you get for the dollar, and what, what a difference this would make in the community. And so I'm asking my colleagues here to entertain earmarking forty thousand dollars of ARPA funds for this program. Um, if that were to be approved this evening, we could, um, I could then work further with Mr. Solis to bring back some, uh, more specifics on the program, and then, um, the council could then weigh in, and we can make some tweaks to the program before it's finally rolled out at some point. So I would love to hear any questions from any of my colleagues for clarification or anything.
Yeah, I, I just have a couple of questions. One, uh, in areas like along Raleigh's strip mall, is it not allowed for that individual because they work for the city to clean up their strip mall? You know, and how would that differ as opposed to C Street downtown in front of the businesses, you know?
Well, I think obviously the city would be limited, and, and Mr. Solis, or Mr. Hines can pipe in on this, but obviously we're not looking to clean up private property per se. We're looking at trying to clean up the areas around that, but this program would work hand-in-hand. Another thing is, it's, it's an extra set of eyes in the ground. If we have a, a litter abatement officer who's cleaning up around, say, down Twin Cities along the sidewalks, and he sees, you know, an extra amount of garbage at, say, one of the restaurants or businesses there, then he could pass that information on to code enforcement, and they can work hand-to-hand with visiting that property owner and, and educating them about getting on board with keeping our town clean. If education and, you know, sugar doesn't work, then vinegar comes next, and, uh, we just, uh, but I firmly believe that you have to lead by example to, to expect others to follow, and I feel like that's what we're trying to do here.
Excellent. Uh, last question is, uh, you mentioned it's going to be paid for by ARPA funds, and how long will that be paid for via ARPA funds? And then it's going to transition to regular budget item?
Well, I think initially we were thinking, um, based on, I think, Mr. Spandario kind of educated me on the ARPA a little bit, we thought there was maybe some, that this could probably fund for, that maybe some, some additional funds could probably get this, keep this going for a couple of years, and then we could try to morph it into a regular budget item or something. What, what was your thoughts on that? I forget.
As it relates to this item, um, yeah, this is, I think we discussed it at the time, it was, um, a general governmental service, so it could be used through the loss revenue, which is what this proposed for. And those funds are, uh, those funds can be used up and through, uh, December twenty twenty-six. So, um, uh, after that, the city's gonna have to look elsewhere for, 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 for the resources.
I'm hoping through our budget work that we're doing now, that possibly by that time, or at least in the next couple of years, we could, you know, have measures in place that could, and we're not even sure what department this is going to fall under. I know Mr. Slade's has been very proactive so far, but Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Selling have also given input, so there's a lot of discussion about exactly, uh, who would be taking the leader, what this position, which department would fall under, um, because it's streets, but it's also some median landscaping, so it's kind of a gray area. But I think that would be, you know, determined before it came back to council with, with, you know, in, in the, in the actual presentation of the details of this. Right now, we're just looking at, just getting consensus to earmark the money, uh, for the program, and then what the program ends up being would be a decision that we would all make when it comes back, you know, as far as the exact specifics of it.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it, actually. I think it's very similar to, uh, eliminating graffiti in our town. It, uh, the way we treat it's the way everyone else will treat it, it's that simple.
Well, I appreciate that. Another quick thing I just felt to mention was, you know, when I mentioned eyes and ears on the ground, um, you know, I have found that there's a lot of areas maybe in town that could, could benefit from more trash receptacles. So another thing by having this program is, this person could report back and, and come up with a consensus of certain, certain areas that probably are in need of better receptacles. Another thing I, I've noticed is, or was an idea was to maybe look at our municipal code regarding drive-throughs. I know a lot of drive-throughs have, have gone away, taken away their trash cans at the end of the drive-through because people tend to abuse them, but without those trash cans, it's starting to become bad. People just throw their stuff out, and then it blows into the neighbors. So I think there's other things we could look at as a whole, big picture, where we could start doing other tiny things, um, uh, to, to supplement, you know, the greater picture of, of keeping the town clean. So just wanted to throw that in there. I just saw it, I didn't read it. Is any other comments from my fellow council members?
I have a question as it relates to your proposal here, but as to the ARPA as a whole. Page three of three fiscal analysis, uh, indicates it goes through, it's, can be used through December of twenty-four to twenty-six. Am I?
We have to obligate or encumber the funds by December of twenty twenty-four, but we can actually expend them through twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So I, I like the, uh, concept of, of having some extra eyes and ears out there, especially related to trash and litter in the public areas. I think it'd be beneficial for the community. One of my questions was already answered, that we're not going to go on to, necessarily on to private property and, and abate, uh, litter. That's more for the thoroughfares, so that's, that's good. Partnerships with Cal Waste in terms of disposing the litter and trash, would that be a regular, like? Help me understand how, how operationally that would happen.
So I think.
Like a trash can that we dump into every day, and then they come pick it up?
So I think initially, and this is, of course, just, the deal was floated several months ago, um, they were very interested in being a part of that, as, you know, they have been in other things in the community, and they said, well, let us know how we could help with that, um, whether it was, you know, the abatement officer at the end of his day just transports over directly to the Cal Waste facility and drops off, or they actually offered to even, uh, use, us use their, the little, they have like a miniature garbage truck that they actually put, like, you know, keep Gault clean and all this stuff, and it basically is not even being used, it's sitting there, so there was that. So there's ideas, but basically they're willing to, um, they're willing, they sound like they're willing to contribute with disposing. Now, I'm sure I'm not going to, you know, they're not here tonight, I can't promise that they can't change their mind, but, um, obviously, you know, the trash should have to go somewhere, so if they end up not being interested, then we would obviously be looking at having to dispose that trash in our city cans. But I just figured better in the city cans than on the city streets, so.
Okay, and then, um, in the estimated costs in the, um, the staff report, it's three to five thousand dollars a year for material costs, trash bags, et cetera, fuel. Is there a way, uh, and as I was reading this, my thought was maybe to partner with, um, Ace Hardware or somebody in the community that has that type of material that they sell, um, to maybe ask them to donate so we're not, uh, expending that money?
Oh, for sure.
That, I think that, that would also get more additional community buy-in through, through our local businesses. I think that'd be good. Um, and then thirty to forty thousand dollars a year, how did we come up with that dollar amount?
That was a dollar amount when I approached Mr. Solis some months ago and asked him what would it cost, you know, uh, not a, like, entry level, but maybe entry to upper, next-tier worker. You know, we obviously would talk, discussion about wages and how it's tough to find someone for minimum wage and so on. Um, he gave me a figure, uh, roughly on a, uh, what a, what a, uh, part-time, twenty-eight-hour-a-week worker with, you know, the costs that are involved. Obviously, this is not a, uh, benefit position because it's part-time, so it wouldn't have, uh, you know, pensions and things in there, but he, he was, he gave me that range. I believe doing just some simple math on, say, twenty-eight hours a week with, uh, you know, just using that low number of thirty grand, you could actually pay someone fairly well. I mean, it's definitely not going to, it's definitely going to be above minimum wage, for sure.
Okay. Well, entertain this idea just for a second. I come up with crazy ones every now and then, but my thought is this, and I, I, I think, um, well, twofold. One, I'd really like to see us use, um, the ARPA funds for one-time funding, and I think this is something that probably could get us through, um, this budget cycle, meaning eighteen months from now, uh, through using the ARPA funds, but projecting out beyond that, I think, especially with the possible second position as noted in here, um, trying to do that through general fund. So in the interim, instead of bringing on a new person, a new body, let's say, is there a way to take one of our current part-time staff that is already part-time, should they be interested? And, and what came to mind when I was reading through this was, we have, um, the, the crew that mows, uh, the landscape medians, I think we have some part-time help there. What a perfect opportunity for somebody to get some additional hours. And also, they're already out in the streets doing this stuff, and so maybe on the days that they don't work with the, with the, um, the lawn mowing crew, or maybe at the end of their shift of that, then they go out and do the, the, uh, litter abatement, and, and the thought is, is that maybe that is an opportunity to marry the two together so that the person's out doing, um, the landscape medians in the parks, and then they turn around in the afternoon, and I'm just using this as an example, and do the litter abatement in that same area. That's two passes, um, and I think it's, it's an opportunity for, uh, to get more bang-for-a-buck, if you will. And, and you wouldn't necessarily have to only, you know, have one person doing it. Maybe it's a, uh, somebody that's in Parks and Recreation also, that's part-time, that could use the extra funding. That way, at the end of it all, when, uh, let's say the eighteen months is over and we decide we're going to bring somebody on, you know, three people full-time, let's say, um, or that we decide at that point, maybe we can't afford it, that we don't have to lay a body off, but this will give our own employees already that are out there working an opportunity for extra funding. So that was my thought about that. Um, and, and, uh, the, uh, the crews that do our mowing is what came to mind initially, so, and I think that would be a good marriage, um, of the two.
Well, I think I'll, I'll ask if Mr. Solis wants to come up and maybe give his comments on that while he's walking up. I can say that we did discuss, um, some areas that we initially laid out, because we initially, we, we laid out a huge list of all the streets that we thought were thoroughfares, we identified them on a map, and then Mr. Solis went through and said, okay, well, we already do that particular area with parks, so we would need to do that, it's already done twice a month. Uh, because another thing is, the way this program is set up too, is that the original idea was to have ten zones, and you would do zone one on Monday, zone two on Tuesday, so forth, and the next week you do zone six through ten. So you're hitting each area twice a month, which we, I think is, is, needs to be done. Whereas some of the, some of, uh, his crews right now are only doing things once a month. So we did identify some of those, um, but then I, before you, um, put your two cents on the, on the usability of the dual worker, um, I know there is a lot of areas, though, that are not, like First Street, for example, First Street from New Hope to Cost is one we identified as a street that would need to be, it's a main thoroughfare, but there's not really any parks on there, so that would, it's not really near a park, so unless you came from Metta View. So, I mean, there is some areas I think that were, uh, not really like, like do a park and then do the around-up, so there is a lot of areas that are, that they would have to travel, so it, it's, uh, anyways, so you want to answer Mr. Lozano's question?
Just initially thinking about it, it'd be a little difficult, but I'd be glad to look at all options and consider everything that council would, uh, like us to look into.
Yeah, I just think it would be a good idea, just to look into it, um, especially, you know, if we have part-time workers who really would like to be full-time, but we don't have that opportunity for them, this might give them an opportunity to, uh, like I said, to get some additional income that, and they're, and they're already working here. Uh, and I think that, at least from, um, from a employee development perspective, I think that helps. Um, and, uh, thinking, as I was thinking through it, you know, just those, those folks that are, that are out there every day already, uh, know our city already, and they could go through and, uh, they wouldn't necessarily have to do the same areas they're mowing in that day, but, uh, that would be a great opportunity for, for somebody.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of our part-time employees work twenty-eight to thirty-six hours a week already, so it really is going to depend on how many hours you're going to want this person out there. Maybe that we have to do two different people to make up those twenty-eight hours or things like that, but I'll be happy to look at anything.
I mean, maybe, maybe eventually the program becomes, maybe in two years, we, we look at the program, and maybe we have at that point, we've hired our full mowing crews and, and we've got a handle on, like, mowing the parks as often as, all that as we'd want to, and then at that time we could say, well, we have sufficient staff, and let's look at, like, making one of those six people, or one of those whatever people, that person. And, yeah, I mean, I definitely could see that happening. I think it's, I think this whole idea is fluid. I'm just trying to get it off the ground. I feel like once you get the ball rolling, then it's easier to get behind it and just give it little pushes, but that initial push is always the hardest. And so that's the concept behind it. Maybe, maybe we're in just dire straits and in two years, or whatever, in the eighteen months, and then the program just runs out of funding and we can't fund it anymore. You know, maybe that's what happens. But, uh, you know, I initially thought with the ARPA money, because, you know, the mask thing is what really was a catalyst for me, I was like, you know, there always was a bunch of trash, but now it's like, seems like when I go out and clean up, masks is like, one of the main items I find the most. I picked a mask up walking into City Hall today, laying around on the sidewalk. So I feel like COVID in general has contributed more to this problem, and so I would like to use money that's been set aside for this to try to combat that problem, so.
Like I said, I, I, I think it's a great idea in terms of, um, the concept of having city staff out cleaning up, um, and especially if we have an opportunity to use, um, you know, I know, I know ARPA money's not grant money, but, uh, same kind of concept, uh, where we're not using, uh, the general fund money to do this right away. I would just like to see staff come back with some options on, uh, partnerships, um, some additional firm information with Cal, about Cal Waste and, and what they might be interested in doing, uh, now, and then also whether or not we can use that, uh, our existing staff, uh, to help fund it, or to help, to help, um, do the work.
And I think the additional material cost, I, I really hadn't really thought of your idea with the bat trash bags and stuff, that's a great idea. I think we could definitely get some businesses on board, whether it be Ace Hardware, or Walmart, or Tractor Supply, or somebody that would be willing to, you know, be able to put their name on this program, saying we're doing our part by providing, you know, X, Y, Z picker-up tools, or bags, or whatever. I think the fuel cost really, in my eyes, is really the, the biggest ongoing cost. Initial cost would be, you know, a vehicle, whether it's a side-by-side, or it's a pickup truck, or whatever it is, but I think the fuel to me is the one that, that would be the, the most ongoing expense, as far as it reoccurring, um, so. Well, thank you for the ideas, Rich. Um, thank you for the input, um, from my fellow constituents. Do we have any, um, public comment in the audience that people have put in for, on this particular item?
Sorry, Mr. Bob Malier?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members, staff members, especially Lorenzo Hines, city manager. I want to thank you for inviting me through the facilitation of Director Armando Solis and his administrative assistant, Ms. Monica Lopez, both of whom were present to speak with him on November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, about the Commission on Aging Having Possible Access to Some ARPA Funds, to enable the commission to jumpstart provide social activities for our seniors. our seniors in the coming year 2022 by providing, for example, quarterly lunches, ice cream socials during the summer, conducting interactive games and other social activities, like an end of year dinner dance for seniors, and providing a forum by communicating with seniors via the mail, as long as COVID restrictions are still preventing us from meeting in person. These activities will depend on local businesses sharing the cost or the cost of or in sponsorship of those activities. On that note, I would like to let the city council know that I have the tacit approval or commitment on the part of Cal Waste, which you've mentioned several times already, and even SMUD, to partnership with the Commission on Aging for anything that exceeds our budget when we have these activities planned for our senior citizens. Our total cost for the ARPA portion of this will depend on local businesses sharing the cost and the partnership. Our total cost would be detailed when applying for these ARPA funds at a maximum, and the maximum should not exceed $4,500. In the city manager's considered opinion, which I always respectfully value, these activities, quote, "These activities do not meet the requirements of ARPA funding," end quote, if I understood you correctly, and that the commission, and that, quote, "The commission should consider attaining these funds through the usual budget process," end quote, "for which are for the fiscal year beginning July 2022." So we have the intervening six months where there's, you know, not, nothing there, to June 30th of 2023, which of course is the fiscal year coming up. However, I respectfully have a different perspective on this issue. The senior community in Galt has been arguably the group of citizens that have been the most adversely affected by ravages and the resulting severe restrictions of the COVID-19 crisis, which is still ongoing. Because of these restrictions, seniors have been virtual prisoners in their own homes for at least the last 18 months. I and some of my fellow commissioners, in part through the Galt Senior Resource Center, received numerous inquiries from seniors wanting to know, quote, "When can we socialize again, interact with our social, with our fellow seniors at the Shebola Center? When will we be able to return to normal?" The most common pleas we hear are, quote, "We are lonely. We are bored out of our mind. We want to see our friends again," or comments to that effect. That is why the seniors' plight in our city and the commission's plan to provide for safe resocialization is in fact connected to COVID disaster and should meet the COVID connection requirement. And if not responded to sooner rather than later, will more than likely have, in my humble opinion, a devastating effect on the mental well being of many of our senior citizens, senior citizens. This is the connection to ARPA right there, the welfare of our senior citizens, because it was mentioned a little while ago. I am not a mental health expert. In fact, I'm just mental. This is simply my personal opinion based on my own life experience and observation. I therefore invite the council to please consider consulting a mental health expert about this to ascertain if my opinion is spot on or not. In closing, I respectfully request you to consider awarding the Commission on Aging a portion of the ARPA fund, a modest portion of the ARPA funds, as indicated, and for the reasons I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valier. What, could, could staff tell me, what is the, what is the budget for the Commission on Aging right now? Do they get a budget every year? And if so, Mr. Solis is coming up to?
I believe I can speak for all commissions. I do not believe any of them have a budget. When they've had a special request, we brought that forward to council. And may I also clear something else up, a statement Commissioner Bailey had said, "The city is not prohibiting the seniors from gathering at the Shebola Center. That is a decision that the senior club has made on their own. They're an independent group, and they've decided not to gather at this time."
So you're just saying, so there's some organizations that have done things like this, and they're just not doing it right now?
Correct. We, we are not prohibiting them. The county or state mandates do not prohibit them to gather.
Mr., I don't know if this is a question for Mr. Solario or Mr. Heinz. What are, what are the parameters, if, if it's not allowed, I mean, what, is there no parameter under ARPA that any funds could be used? I mean, it just seems like it would be, because it seems to me like-
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Vandenberg.
Thank you. I think there may be, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys did consider becoming a nonprofit, correct?
Yes, we, we were discussing it. We're still in the process of discussing that possibility, but not the Commission on Aging. It's just for the Resource Center, that we want to be a, we want to turn into a charitable organization.
Okay.
The CUA divorced itself, so to speak, from the Resource Center.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, because on page four of seven, the reason I mentioned page four of seven, the sixth item is directly for nonprofit programs, so.
Mr. Heinz, go ahead.
Members of the council, and thank you, Commissioner Valier. I just wanted to clarify, the statement that I made regarding ARPA was that I initially don't think that these funds are eligible for ARPA. However, I will check with the city attorney. So that's what I said. But in the meantime, since I did not have clarity, I offered to Mr. Valier that, tell me what, I basically asked, tell me what you need to get through this fiscal year, and we will work with you on getting that. And then, when we have the budget for next year, your needs will be, how should I say, part of the budget process, which allows the council and the public to see exactly the funds that are being requested, how they're being spent, and allows it to go through a process that all of our other programs go through. So we did offer to help him through this fiscal year until I got clarity regarding the ARPA funds. Now, I have gotten clarity regarding the ARPA funds, and we can provide funding to the commission through the loss revenue category. Now, the dilemma there is I've got a community survey that says the priority for that is parks. And so I am working with Director Solis and trying to make sure that I've, I've taken care of all of the issues with parks. And so these pool, the pool heater and the issue that you see before you is an example of that. And so I wanted the opportunity to do that and, and bring these items back to you, but at the same time, help Commissioner Valier with his current year issues, and we will find other funding, because I believe his current year request was in the neighborhood of 2,500. So we were going to work with him on getting him essentially a bridge through this fiscal year. And then, if, if there is a request for 4,500 bucks, I'm sorry, $4,500, then that would go through the normal process and will be dissected and trisected by the council and to the public. And, and they can at that point make that decision. But, and it was also my understanding that the commission had received funding in the past for special events. And so given that, that history's there, again, I decided, all right, let's, let's see if we can get them through this fiscal year in a modest way, and then get the whole situation in front of council in April, May, and June.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. So, and I, and I appreciate that. And I, and if we could, you know, do something like what they're talking, first of all, I agree with the, I think the concept is, is, I delivered food today to seniors, and I had this lady basically just in tears telling me that she hadn't had a visitor in God knows how long. It was really hard to hear that. So, I mean, I know what our survey said, but I'm telling you, this is twice I've went out to talk to seniors, and these people are seriously being affected by this. If we can do this through, you know, budget process through Parks and Rec, or we can do it through ARPA, but I can't say they're looking at this numbers. I get that those are priorities, but, I mean, we're giving, we're, we're looking at allocating 1.3 million, three, you know, $3,925. I mean, we could just simply trim off four grand and make it an even 1.3 million, and I don't think the businesses are going to squawk about four grand in the grand scheme of things for, I'm just saying, I think four grand in all this money here is like nothing. So, I mean, I would like to see the fastest or most quickest way, and if it's not this, I, I get that, but I, I think, I'm just saying that I would like to see this be something that we, we kind of prioritize. Four grand is nothing. I mean, we already got-
And, excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry. The, the dollar amount isn't the issue. It is the exploration of the programmatic need that is the issue. Now, you actually came up with some, some good ideas just in your statements, in that by giving this program a public hearing, we may be able to expand Commissioner Valier's efforts, because now if it becomes a public hearing, then we can see if the county can help. We can see if there's other organizations out there that can help. We can actually leverage this issue to see if we can grow it. And so that's why I wanted to buy time, help Bob put together a, a good proposal, and maybe we can go find some partners. So as far as, I understand the immediacy of it, and so the solution that we arrived at got him the immediate dollars, because we were going to use current funding that we have authority for today. And, but, and so I, I, I mean, I have to be honest, this, this presentation was a total surprise to me, because I thought we had solved the issue for this year and had a plan for next year. Because, and I want to make it clear, we care about our seniors, both from the city manager and the staff. That's why we made the decision immediately, let's use today's dollars. Let's not even wait for ARPA or council decision. They've already made a decision on the appropriation. Let's use some of this appropriation now, today, to help Bob and the seniors. And so, and so this conversation today is totally, a total surprise, because I thought this was already in play.
Okay. Well, I'm still happy that Mr. Valier brought it forward.
Yes, I'm glad.
I mean, I'd love to see that the commission is so active. And after my recent visits to people, I think that there's a lot of people advocating, there needs to be more people advocating on their behalf. And I don't, you know, anytime he wants to come, and the answer may not always be yes or no, or, you know, yes, but, so I appreciate that, Mr. Heinz. I just want to make sure this doesn't just get, you know-
No, it doesn't.
Swept under the rug and forgotten about.
And I, and I just wanted you to know, by, by, again, getting this program in a public forum, that we have partners like the Transit, the Transit Service, and some of the other, and Meals on Wheels, and maybe we can bring in some of these partners and sort of put a 360 degree support system around some of our seniors, instead of just offering one particular thing or one particular service. Maybe we can get together and just put together, for lack of a better word, a wraparound service for our seniors, because I understand they've been heavily hit. This has been a tough time. And so we've got to do what we can to bring some semblance of normalcy to them as quickly as possible, and that's why we wanted to use the dollars that are currently appropriated.
Okay. Just as long as, I just want to be clear, just as long as the message when we go out and do this is not, I know we want to find partners, but I don't want it to be like, we're just looking for somebody else to be like, oh, hey, thanks for volunteering that, great. And, oh, thanks you, sir. Okay, you guys go ahead and, you know, because that's, I think the city does that a lot. Right now, we have a lot of people, a lot of businesses in this community that are very charitable, and it's, I don't think it's fair that we always ask them to pick up the tab when we're being handed millions of dollars.
Right.
And, and we're like, let's find some partners to help out with this. I just want to be clear.
And it's, and it's, and it may not be a situation where they're contributing dollars. It may be a situation where we're contributing the dollars, but we're using their expertise and their networks to help us carry out what we want to carry out. But we, we, we don't have the opportunity to have that conversation until the budget process, but meanwhile, I can at least get Bob going through this fiscal year while we develop the proposal for the council in April, May, and June.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that action, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Do, anybody have any questions for Mr. Heinz before I move on?
I just have one comment I just want to bring up. When, I just want to remind everyone, all my colleagues, that shortly after the, the ARPA, original ARPA staff report was published, I received, and I think we all did, I'm not certain, but I received a letter from one of the business community groups asking for additional funds for Small Business Assistance Program that specifically 21% be moved to 25. And so if we're going to look at what these funds are going to do, or how we're going to move them around, just, I, I don't want that to get lost, because there is at least some understanding that there's a need for more than 1.303 million dollars to small business funds. And I just point back to that email in the letter.
I agree completely. I agree with you. Yeah. I was just using that as an example, but I, I agree. So, Mr. Heinz, can I clarify? So, so tonight, we're basically just looking at getting the council's approval to take 506,000 of the 1480 and get that going, and then see if we have a consensus for the, no?
So, I understand, I understand. And I'm with you, Councilmember Vandenberg. So what, what I'm hearing, and it's sort of subject to how City Attorney Splendario is seeing this, is we're looking for first, the resolution to be passed, and so that we can appropriate those dollars and get those dollars into the hands of the parks and public works to do those things. So the second thing that I'm hearing is, if the council is approving a, a, basically an earmark of $40,000 for this position, and directing me and the staff to, okay, you have the money, let's figure out a way to do this. Let's figure out a way to bring this to fruition, bring it back to us as a program proposal, and we'll, we'll go from there. Is that's what I'm hearing? And if that's different, then please let me know.
Yeah, no, I was just leading, I was just getting, what I was getting to is that just, we weren't approving all these, because he mentioned, these, these other numbers are flue. We're not approving-
No.
That's what I just wanted to clarify.
The only number that-
We're silly talking about those two items right now.
The only number that you're approving is the 506 and, and the, the sort of earmark of the $40,000, and the direction for me to bring back a program. We will, as we start to design these programs, bring proposals back to council, because, because this is so complex and so politically sensitive, I want to make sure that we take time, like when we bring back the Small Business Assistance Program, that's all we're going to discuss that night. Okay? So now, the only easy item for council to approve, and I didn't put it on this item, on this agenda, because I wanted to kind of focus on the two items that are there, is the one time payments for essential workers. We've essentially already made that, and basically, we're just looking for you all to say, all right, you can use these monies to support that. That's the last easy item on the list. And the rest of it has, has to do with programmatic proposals that we'll be making before council. But we want to, we want to sort of piecemeal it and get it, get it done. And as Armando, I'm sorry, Director Solis is finding that playground equipment is damaged and can't be replaced, or we've got, we've got restrooms that are constantly under duress because of vandalism, somebody's blowing up toilets, you know, things, measures that we need to take to bring our parks up to speed, you'll be seeing some of those expenditures as well. But tonight, and in my, my whole strategy for ARPA is to keep these meetings to sort of one or two item meetings, because this is complex. We only have this opportunity once. We want to get it right. We want to make sure everybody's on board, and we go from there.
Do you have a question, Rich?
No, I just, no, my understanding was, was just that, exactly what you said, Mayor, in terms of, I wasn't, I wasn't talking about moving money.
Well, then, you mentioned that, I was, that's, I was like, oh.
I just wanted to point out that we did get an email that asked for 25%, not 21, and so.
Yeah, and I look forward to that.
So, you know, the other thing, I, I think, in terms of the abatement, if, if, if I could ask staff to go back through and, and come up with, you know, the, not only, because we're going to have to have a job description, whether or not it's held in, in, in one position or the other, right?
Right.
Whether it's an existing employee or a new employee, it's going to have a job description. I'd really like to, I'd be interested in seeing that. And then also, kind of the mission vision of the position. And I know it was, it's in the staff report here, but maybe some, some rework with, with, you know, putting legal stuff in there and making sure our municipal code is, is up to speed.
Okay.
And that's it. Yeah.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll endeavor to make that happen. Is that okay with you, Mayor? Yes, yes, that's, that's great. Vice Mayor, do you have a question?
I know, thank you.
You start, you started speaking, okay. Do we have any additional public comment? Do we have any additional public comment on either of these items?
No hands raised.
Okay, and no phone call? And nobody in the room? Okay. Go ahead and give just a moment here. If you, we're going to close the public comment period on these two items. So, if you'd like to make comment, now is your opportunity. All right, so we'll be looking for, we need a motion on this. Because we're looking to adopt a resolution, okay. So, I'm going to close the public comment. Nope, there's no hands raised. Nobody online? Okay, all right, public comment period is now closed. All right, we'll be looking for a motion. I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution appropriating $506,000 for pool repairs and Parks and Recreation Department for American Rescue Plan Act revenues and earmarking additional $40,000 for proposed litter abatement program and provide a return of that program by staff in the future. I don't know if that's specific enough. Okay, that's the motion that I'm making. Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. I have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on to next item, H2. From the Police Department, we have the lease of the automated license plate readers from Flock Group Incorporated. It's going to be presented by our Police Chief, Mr. Kalanowski, and Officer Little.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are going to talk a little bit about automated license plate readers in a project that Officer Mike Little worked on, which is bringing this technology, hopefully upon your approval, to the community to allow us to engage in some additional crime prevention efforts and tracking vehicle movements within the community. Also with us today is Mr. John Anderson from the Flock Group Incorporated. So, if we have any specific questions that myself or Officer Little cannot answer, we have the experts and company representatives with us this evening. So, without any further ado, because frankly, this is all Mike's show, all the work that he's done that we support. We think it's an excellent program. I will turn it over to him for presentation. We have a PowerPoint we'll be following. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Officer Little with the Galt Police Department. As Chief said, this is a project I've been working on sometime early summer. So, quite a few hours in research has gone into it. So, essentially, citywide automated license plate readers, which will be referred to as ALPR from here forward, is a very complex system. We go to the next slide. So, I'll go over a couple of things here for you. Some of the items that we're going to cover, that's right here. You're all right. Sorry about that. So, a couple of things we'll cover. What exactly is an ALPR system? Why does the city of Galt need such a system? What system would work for our city, and how much does it cost? So, currently, the city does not have any video surveillance or active ALPR system. With a limited number of police officers working at any given time, crimes can be difficult to solve or prevent. The addition of the new established technology, which would ensure greater safety for the citizens and business owners alike, interdiction of a camera system into the police department would allow for further investigations into crimes. In turn, the system would deter criminals from victimizing our city. So, what exactly is an ALPR system? It recognizes license plates. It gathers objective evidence and facts about the vehicle, not the people inside the vehicle. It is used to alert the police of wanted vehicles, whether it be from our jurisdiction or an outside jurisdiction. It is used to solve crime, and adheres to all state laws. What an ALPR system does not do, it is not facial recognition. It does not tie to any personal identifying information. It doesn't look for who's in the vehicle. It's not trying to find who's in the vehicle. It's not used for immigration or traffic enforcement, and the data is automatically deleted after 30 days. So, a benefit for an ALPR system, it operates 24/7, 365 days a year. It allows for investigative leads to be established, even if there's no officer present in the area at the time of the crime. Criminal vehicles can be spotted before a crime occurs. The cost savings for this system versus more officers on the streets, and it has a higher return on investment with the findings that the cameras find. So, ALPR system, there's multiple different ways you can make an ALPR system work. There's, if you have the technology, you can create your own system with your IT department and the police department and the city itself. You can also go to a vendor for a cookie cutter system where you buy the actual equipment, and it's yours from there on, or a subscription-based system. So, for the city of Galt, a subscription-based system has more benefit than the others. You have an upfront cost. You have any maintenance that the cameras need is included in that cost. Hardware updates, 24/7 tech support. There's no involvement from the outside city departments. So, we're not, once they're installed, Public Works, IT, we don't drain their workload. It's all through the Flock system itself. There's also no overhead, other than the subscription cost to the city. So, why Flock Safety? Flock Safety is on the leading edge of subscription-based services for private and government agencies. The subscription covers everything from planning of placement, installation, updates, maintenance, and everything that you can kind of fall in between there. So, currently, Roseville PD was kind of the first one in the area to bring Flock to the area. Elk Grove just signed a contract with Flock, I think it was two weeks ago or last week, to bring over 50 cameras to their city. Roseville did a side-by-side comparison with their last system, which is a system that we had as well. And it was a night-and-day difference with the technology. Flock has developed a vehicle fingerprint, which identifies multiple aspects of the vehicle, such as the style, color, if there's any body damage, stickers, anything, like a roof rack, stuff like that. Axon has partnered with Flock to use mobile ALPR for the Fleet 3 cameras. So, when we update our brand-new cameras to the newest one, which would be the Fleet 3, all patrol cars can actually turn into mobile ALPRs as well. They're self-sustained. If there's no available power, it's a solar panel and battery system that gets mounted with the camera itself. So, we don't need to have Public Works run power or anything like that. It is a self-sustained unit. Biggest thing for ALPR is the privacy for our citizens and anyone in the city. I wouldn't be suggesting this if I thought there was any breach of privacy. So, just kind of go over some items here. The footage is owned by the agency and not by Flock. It's a 30-day retention period. The short retention period ensures that all data is not associated with the crime, is automatically deleted. Takes human bias out of crime solving by detecting objective data, not opinion-based data. All data is stored securely with Flock's state-of-the-art technology. The search reason is needed for an audit trail. Everything that's gone, we, when an officer uses Flock, he has to have a reason, he has to have a reason to use it, and they have to log that reason why. You don't just jump on there and look for your grandma driving through town. It has to have a reason, and it has to. And that gets audited. It is not facial recognition, again. It's not used for immigration enforcement. It is not used for traffic enforcement. From the time it takes the picture to the time the officer is looking at the data, it is encrypted all the way through. It's actually really impressive, that technology that they have for that. Again, there's no personal information contained in Flock or within the system. It is not connected to registration data or third-party databases like Carfax or DMV. And it's a, there's a transparency portal as well, part of that audit system. So, why take a proactive approach with these cameras? For placement reasons, we want them to have inbound, the cameras looking inbound versus outbound. Most suspects we encounter are not from the city, so they're coming into town. So, narcotics, stolen vehicles, weapons generally do not originate from inside of our cities. We would like to catch them as they're coming in, rather than when they're leaving, already making victims of our citizens and business owners. The camera locations are going to be determined with the Flock experts, city administrators, and the police administration. Flock does have a service where they take a look at our city and with input from the others, figure out what's best and what's going to capture the most for their system. So, the cost for the department, it's $2,500 per camera per year. There's a $250 one-time installation fee per camera. And this covers any adjustments, installation, updates as the system grows and more technology comes out. So, where that money would come from would be the vehicle theft fund. It will not have any impact on the general fund. The vehicle theft fund has adequate funding to cover the cost of 15 cameras per year while supporting other efforts to reduce vehicle theft from within the city of Galt. This technology and program will launch Galt into being a city that criminals want to avoid, rather than come here to, because it's a small town. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Officer Little. So, I think we've seen a presentation on this at the Public Safety. So, for the people that are watching, still trying to understand exactly, so take me through your scenario. So, there's a, there's been a report of some catalytic converter thefts. And somebody spotted a car, you know, a white sedan, Ford Fusion, whatever. And somebody got a license plate number as it was leaving their neighborhood. That number goes in the database. With the Flock system, if that, if that car was to enter the city of Galt in the perimeter where these cameras are installed, you guys would get notified that that particular suspect vehicle has entered the community and where at, and so on, and so that you could, is that correct?
Correct. So, there's actually two parts to that. So, yes, if we were provided a license plate by a victim or a witness, we can instantly put it into the database. Fairfield PD just had this where exactly that scenario, catalytic converter theft. Neighbor was able to write all that stuff down. They entered the car into the database. Within an hour and a half, it triggered another camera. They arrested the guy with a bunch of catalytic converters and stuff in the trunk of the car. On the, the second part of that is, the cool thing about Flock, which is very new and they're on the leading edge of, is if we don't have a license plate, but we know it was a white four-door car, we can search within a timeframe for a white four-door car and see if we can find an associated license plate that goes with that, to further our investigative leads. It doesn't necessarily, it doesn't make, it's not 100% that that's our car, but it helps us start those leads that we may not have otherwise.
So, you, so you have a certain incident. Now, let's say it's a, let's say it's something serious, like there's a shooting or something. And somebody says, "Well, I didn't get the license plate number, but I saw the car." You could then look in the proximity of that area, and you say, "Oh, on the camera, there was a car matching that description that we got a shot of that car, and through that, through that video from the Flock camera, you're able to identify a license plate number, and then that number now gets inputted, and that becomes like a suspect number-one vehicle." And this system networks with other agencies, other cities that are using this. So, if something transpired in Lodi, if Lodi has a drive-by shooting, and they input a license plate number and all that stuff, if that suspect vehicle enters, comes down lower sack and enters in, say, the cost road or the perimeter where you have a camera, that's how it works, right?
So, with Elk Grove signing with 50-something cameras, and then Lodi is looking at the same technology, obviously, we would have an MOU with them, but it would, that's exactly right. We have something here, say, by the time we get it in the system, now they're in Elk Grove, and they're starting to bounce off cameras there. Elk Grove can have the opportunity to help us get our suspect, and we can send an officer up there and finish our case, and vice versa. If they have something, we can help them as well.
So, last question, and I'm sure my colleagues have questions. You said 15 cameras initially. Obviously, that's what you're looking to roll out with the funding that we have. Obviously, you'd want to maybe grow that later. With those 15, I think you were saying, the idea would be to set up a perimeter. So, we're not really going to have those internally. It's more like a perimeter of people entering the community, right?
Correct.
At all the entrance points?
Yeah, so we work with, with our administration and with Flock at looking at the biggest thoroughfares into the city. So, like you said earlier, like cost in lower sack. So, northbound, you want on Lincoln, obviously, coming off the freeways. Lincoln being our main north-to-south, and then kind of dividing like C Street, A Street on the west side of town, and then looking at like Twin Cities on the east side, and Simmerhorn and so on. So, obviously, the more cameras, the more you can cover. But with 15, that's a good, good foundation to start. I think we can cover quite a bit. You know, if it was up to me, obviously, I'd want double that, but we got to start with a solid base to roll it out and then go from there.
One, I'm sorry, one more. You told me a stat where you had, like, stolen cars at a certain, certain agency that before, and it took them, and then when they got their system installed, they were able to, what was that stat you told me?
It was Menlo Park?
Yeah, you're probably thinking of Morgan Hill.
That's right.
And they're actually one of our newest success stories that have been doing really well. This is Mr. Anderson, by the way.
Hi, nice to meet you all. Thank you for allowing me to speak and come talk to you for a couple of minutes about all of this. So, in the first two weeks, they were able to locate eight stolen vehicles and make something like 13 or 14 arrests. And they looked back historically, and it would typically take them eight months to locate the same number of stolen vehicles as they found in two weeks. And what's important about that is most stolen vehicles are coming into town to commit some other crime. About 60% of the time, it's found that the vehicle was stolen in the first place with the purpose of going to commit some other crime and hopefully do it undetected. So, by locating those vehicles proactively, they were preventing those future crimes. But if you do the math on that, they were about 16 times more effective at locating stolen vehicles with the solution versus without. And I got an update from them recently, where they sent me about two and a half months' worth of the results off of the system. And they were at 51 stolen vehicles and 66 arrests, I believe, off of that, which is just crazy in comparison to how long it would normally take them to do the same thing.
Do any of my colleagues, well, Mr. Anderson, or actually Officer Little, or Chief, does anybody have questions?
Yes, just Mr. Mayor. Mr. Little, first of all, thank you for, you know, doing this program. You spend a lot of time. This program, when I reading the report and I was in the Safety Committee too, this is good, this is kind of good for the city, for the citizen's safety, and also good for the business. And my only concern a little bit, that's why I believe I mentioned on Safety Committee too, can you go somebody on the privacy? And I does not want a normal citizens violate any kind of chance or any kind of privacy. Can somebody go through these steps and explain a little bit detail on the privacy policy?
Yeah, so, in, not to dive into really technical stuff, because honestly, it's like Chinese to me, but it, we have to, like I said, we have to have a reason to look at it. So, part of that audit trail is to make sure that we are using it appropriately. It's not capturing any information other than the license plate itself. So, it's not even, it's not tied into the DMV database. There's, it's not running the registered owner. All it is, is worrying about the license plate and the vehicle.
My question, when they're running the license plate, when you guys know the license plate, is automatically, you guys know who is the owner?
Well, we, through other resources, not through this system. We then use that number through our state databases that we already have access to. All this is doing is creating that investigative lead for us to start from, which we may or may not be able to ever have without the system. It all depends on how good our witness is and if they're able to provide that information. Without, this camera system with Flock does not give us information, is not tied into any other personal information. So, that information that we get from the license plate, we then use through our state access system, which we are, all have. On the officer level, we have to do training on that yearly with testing. And then we actually, quite frankly, it's a misdemeanor and a felony for us to abuse that, and it's audited just as much.
So, that's, I mean, that's a very important, because if somebody use, because everybody can have the access to the camera, all the... can have the access to the camera, all the frontline officer, right?
Yes, that's correct. And we have used the license plate reader program with Vigilant, as we indicated, they were on the patrol cars. And we were only effective when those patrol cars were in motion. So we have a flexible policy that we posted online. It's policy 461 that controls our activities related to the license plate reader data. And it's a best business practice that the agency is using the state. And as we bring this technology on, we'll make a reference to the new technology we have, which is the fixed technology. But as Officer Little said, this captures the license plate information. It does not run the license plate information unless we physically do that. It just alerts us to the wanted vehicle.
Okay. The other thing on this report, 30-day retention period, why we choose 30 days? We can choose two weeks, we can do 60 days, what's the?
So there's a complex answer to that. It was longer, I can just really quick touch on, give it to, it wasn't initially longer and that's shortened down. Sometimes crimes aren't reported to the police department until, you know, I've, I've had a couple of weeks out. So within that 30 days, it will allow us to then search for that. It allows for investigative time. Obviously Flock has it perfected, so I'll let him answer that more.
Mr. Anderson, now, how many city in California are using this system?
I don't have an exact number, but I mean, there's a ton. I mean, here in the region.
They, they are, they're in the process, they are already up and running from last one year or six month.
Yeah, so most of them are, are up and running. Some of the ones, just I'll, I'll name a couple of them that are here, kind of in this region, are Elk Grove has five cameras and they're getting the rest that are still pending. Roseville is a client, Woodwind is a client, moving a little bit closer to the Bay, San Ramon, Danville, Livermore, Oakley, Arinda, Hercules, Vallejo, Vacaville, Venetia, Fairfield. I mean, there's a ton that are here in Northern California.
All right. And my next last question is, we can find a location, right? What's the best criteria you can use to find a location to find what our purpose is?
So we've got a, we've got some resources on the backend. We have a few solutions consultants that join us from law enforcement backgrounds. And they come from us with the perspective of being a Flock end user. So they're experts in that side of it. So we'll basically put our heads and your agency's heads together to evaluate the data and how the crimes are happening and where they're happening to come up with the best possible locations. The general best practices are, like Officer Little said, to look at the entry points to the city. And that way, when those, the vehicles that are known to be associated with some sort of criminal activity come into the city, it gives them an opportunity to proactively locate those vehicles and prevent them from doing whatever it is that they were trying to do.
Okay. And the last thing, you know, I just want to make sure the public know that this system is not for any immigration purpose. And this system is also not going to use for the traffic enforcement.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so just for the public listening, this is not like a camera on your red light thing that snaps, or it's not going to like say that your tags on your car overdue and they're going to let Galt PD know your tags are overdue so they can, this is, I just want to be clear for people that are listening. One last question having to do with people's concerns on the, on the negative side. The positive sides for me is, is overwhelming, but obviously we need to ask the question, the hard questions. Has there been any, to you, to your knowledge, Mr. Anderson, has there been any with the, with the other agencies and cities that are using the system? Has there been any notable legal challenges to this at all that have been successful or that are in queue right now?
No, there hasn't, not with Flock. Actually, some of the things that have historically happened, just with, with other vendors and other companies are part of the reason why we exist at all, because we saw some of those issues and challenges and thought there'd be a better way to do it. The privacy came up a second ago and that was one of kind of the big things that we think is really important. Our mission as a company is to eliminate crime, but one of our fundamental principles is that we believe it's possible to help law enforcement and cities do that while at the same time being good on the privacy side of things. To elaborate on your question about the retention, for example, we've come up with 30-day retention because we believe that that is the appropriate time to where the data is tremendously effective for law enforcement, but while at the same time being good on the public and the community side of things, because they know that everything that's not associated with a crime is automatically deleted and not retained for any long period of time.
So, so I know, and that, and you meant, you said something important, it's like there's such a delicate balance today between making a city safer, but then crossing that people consider their civil liberties, you know, violently, there's that delicate balance, right? I mean, that's not, that's, to be truthful, to be completely honest with people listening, I mean, there could be a scenario where, you know, I got pulled over and I'm like, what was I doing wrong? It's like, well, my probable cause was, you know, we saw a description of vehicle matching your exact description. We didn't have a plate yet, but it was seen as a crime. We caught it on one of our fluxes, blah, blah, blah. Maybe you don't tell them all those details, but that would be probable cause, right? To get pulled over. And so although my rights wouldn't be infringed upon, there would be, there would be lawful probable cause, right? To, to, to do that?
So I don't want to.
Really quickly, yeah, so that's no different than if a witness says, hey, I, I saw a blue four-door sedan. That doesn't, that doesn't change, it's still the same. We still then have reasonable suspicion to, to do our investigative stops on that. So it's just another investigative tool and it allows us to essentially, you know, it will allow us to close more cases by using those resources just like that.
Can I elaborate on something with that? Actually something, since you're bringing up that scenario, I think is important to mention, is that because this is an investigative tool that allows them to go from that description of a blue four-door sedan or whatever, and go from that to the license plate, when the patrol officers are not out in the field, they're not, they don't have to look at every single blue four-door sedan and wonder if that's the vehicle that they're looking for, because now they've got the license plate. And instead of paying attention to every vehicle that matches that description, they're only paying attention to the one that actually is the vehicle they're looking for.
Do any of my colleagues have additional questions for Mr. Anderson or?
We've got a couple, a couple of questions. Thank you, Officer Little, for the project presentation, they're great. My experience mostly is with Vigilant and the 30-day retention policy here. So just to make sure I understand this right, Flock has this for 30 days. And then it's incumbent upon us to have a policy as to if we have a crime, to save that information, you know, you have a major crime, to save a snapshot of the city for, you know, the two hours before and two hours after. That would be something that we would have to do. And then we would have to provide our own infrastructure storage for that, which.
I, I didn't touch on this, but Flock is actually with, with integration with Axon, is it, it's integrated in evidence.com, which we are now part of with our body cams and our, and our in-car cameras. So if we, we can take that, that hit from the camera and that information, that printout, and import it directly into evidence.com and attach it to the case for the district attorney. And so everything is laid out really simply and smooth. So that, yeah, we'd have to obviously work on that part of the policy, but for an officer to import it into the case, that's all I have to do now is just, there's, there's ways that goes directly into evidence.com.
Okay. And that was kind of my concern is, is being able to save the information so that, you know, a similar crime happens somewhere else and they actually identify a vehicle, but it's 45 days later, that we're still going to be able to go back and look at all of the data from our city for that, you know, two-hour period or whatever policy we decide on. And then I think you answered my other question, but with all of the cities using Flock, especially some of our immediate neighbors, for that 30 days, if you search a plate, you will get hits on not only our city, but any appearances of that vehicle in other Flock cities that are within the 30 days.
Right, and they, they have to accept that, right? So we have to have our MOU with that city for that, that data sharing. And then they simply get access, just we'd share access to our, our camera systems just like they. And then same thing, if they run it, it would show us, it would show anyone that was in Galt. And if we ran it, it would show anyone to say, let's use Elk Grove. It'll show anytime that car was in Elk Grove as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have one tactical question, maybe Mr. Anderson or, I don't know, whoever the smartest out of the three.
That's not me, all of you.
So I'm assuming, so the cameras are, they're not, they're not on the city's network. They're like on a wide area network that belongs to Flock. And I'm assuming that, that access to that through, from the PD is through like just a web-based, through the cloud to your servers, right? So there's no hardware being installed at PD, none of that?
Yes, exactly.
Really, it's just, there's nothing actually going to be installed at PD, just basically just like a, maybe a, like just a user training on how to log in and, right?
Yep, that's exactly it. So we designed it to be completely infrastructure-free and it's all cloud-based. So we install the cameras themselves, but then aside from that, they run on cellular for the internet connectivity. So that's all handled by us. There's no additional cost on your, on your city or the agency. The same thing with the data storage, they simply just log into a portal from anywhere, just like any of the online services that you use.
So it's like a GSA, so they can log into it from, even from their patrol cars?
Yeah, actually, that's kind of a best practice that most of our clients will do. They log into it, that way if there is an alert that happens, they can get it immediately and all the information from their patrol vehicles. And it can also go through email and text message.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, Rich, you have a question or?
Yeah, I have just a comment and a couple of questions. Officer Little, thank you for the presentation and the thorough research you did. And I just want to point out for the public that this is not something that he was assigned to do through employee development efforts through the city manager's office and certainly the, the chief of police. Employees were offered to, to do this, do projects, and this is one of them. And I think that was very well thought out, very well researched, the use of funds, from that to infrastructure, to all of it. So thank you for your presentation. I think I asked this question when you presented to Public Safety Committee, how is the integration, or what are the integration possibilities to other camera systems? And I'm going to just use one I'm familiar with, with like a Vigilon. How, how could that integrate if we were to choose, if the city were to choose in the future to do, you know, intersection cameras? And I'm not talking about like red light cameras, I'm just talking about information gathering. It may be red light, but that's not really what the focus is, just more intersection cameras or main thoroughfare cameras outside of Flock.
We have a software package that can be integrated with many of those cameras, but then also I'm foreshadowing a little bit here, we've got our own solution for something like that that's going to be coming out probably at some point in 2022. So if you do go to that, we may have our own solution or we can integrate with other cameras.
Okay. And then my other question is, in terms of timeline, so let's say, for instance, the council approves the expenditure tonight and all of the documents. I know the policy and MOU stuff will come later, but what, what is the timeline for actually having cameras up in, in our city and operational?
Our general lead time is about six to eight weeks. There's a few things that we need to go through. We're going to, I've got a team that can help with the permitting side of things also. So we're going to go through the permitting process, working with your public works department. We can install our own pole and there's no additional cost beyond the normal installation that's included with this. But we can install our own pole and there's, in the event that there's a location, it would be ideal to have one of these cameras, but there's no existing light pole or signal pole to put it on. In those instances, we're going to call 811 to ensure that there's nothing underground that could potentially cause an issue. There's, those are a little bit of an X factor with the amount of time that it takes to do the permitting and calling 811. But with all that factored in, we're generally looking at about six to eight weeks.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And again, I thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Anderson, and certainly Chief for your support in this progress, process. And I, I think this will do, do great things to keep our community safe from those folks that come in to try to victimize our, our citizens. So thank you.
Does it, when you, the maintenance is covered by our subscription, right?
Yes.
What about, who incurs the cost of say the camera's vandalized or somebody steals it or something?
Yeah, the only thing that's not included in the maintenance is the, is if there's an issue for something like theft or vandalism. I mean, you'd basically be on the hook for that if you owned the cameras as well. So it's the same kind of thing with that. But that being said, it's really pretty rare that situations like that happen. I mean, I'm knocking on wood here, but it, it's not very frequent. And because of that, when we've been able to keep the costs for that low, it'll never exceed $500 to replace a camera that's broken for vandalism or stolen. So it's not like you're having to do another $2,500 to start up a whole new subscription. And that's just kind of a testament to how rare this really happens.
Yeah, so the 25 is not really a cost per camera, like that's, that's, that's a bulk cost of implementing the camera, setting it up, you know, all the back behind the door stuff, really. But the replacement cost of something broken is, like you said, it's like around 500-ish or something, right?
Yeah, and all we're mainly covering with that is just our labor to come out and do the work and replace the camera, replace the solar panel or whatever was broken because of that. We just, we've decided that since it's not a major issue that happens all the time, we're going to make it as low as we possibly can, just to cover our, our labor on that. Part of our, our model is to make this as easy to budget as possible for your city and the agency, and that's part of it.
I'm going to open the public comment for this item, just for those online that would like to comment, please call in or raise your hand on Zoom, or if you'd like to speak in the room, fill out a speaker sheet. Just want to open that comment now so we can get that rolling. I'll leave that comment, public comment open period for one minute. With one more, I have another geek question here. How many megapixels of those cameras? Just curious.
I don't have an exact number on exactly what the resolution is. What we've done is we've made a, a good balance between the resolution that's going to give a really great image with good image quality for the, the camera to do its processing, while still being efficient for running on, on cellular and those kinds of networks.
That's why I asked, I was curious, how big of an, yeah.
Yeah, and so I don't have the exact number on that, but the, the quality off of the cameras is impressive for everyone that sees it. They're surprised at how good it is. It sounds like some people in the room are familiar with Vigilant. And typically, I mean, the Vigilant clients like, like Roseville and Elk Grove that have switched over are really impressed with the results they're getting.
Thank you. All right, we'll leave the public comment open period for a few more seconds. If any of the council has a question before we get to the end of that. Do we have any hands raised online or?
No hands raised.
Nope, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just wanted to take this opportunity to commend Officer Little. Well done, sir. Great presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, well, if you have no further comment from the council, and we have no public comment online, Ms. Hubert?
No comment.
All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment on this item. And I'll be looking for a motion to adopt a resolution approving a two-year lease of 15 automated license plate readers, ALPR, from Flock Group Incorporated in the amount of $78,750, using funding from the vehicle theft fund SB 2139. So move. Moved by Councilmember Lozano, seconded by Councilman Vandenberg. Get a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Ends of proof 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your work, Officer Little.
And, and I do want to thank you. And when you have competent people like Officer Little and many others in the agency, the less I say, the better it is for the process. So thank you tonight.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next item, eye communication. Do we have any communication this evening?
I was just going to remind the public that the January 4th, 2022 council meeting is canceled.
All right. Thank you. All right, moving on to item J, which is going to be to adjourn the Galt City Council and convene to the Galt successor agency. So now adjourning as a Galt City Council and reconvening as the Galt successor agency. We have a roll call, please.
Board Member Sandu?
Aye.
Board Member Papino?
Here.
Board Member Vandenberg?
Here.
Board Member Lozano?
Here.
And Board Member Farmer?
Here. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
All right. You've here for, Chief, for the presentation or, do you have a public comment on this item?
I'm here to present.
We're here to present, okay. All right, we'll be with you in just a sec. All right. All right, so no public comment. If you have a public comment on this item online, please raise your hand on Zoom or call in. I will give you approximately 30 seconds more to make public comment. Or actually, can I just leave it open, Frank, while she presents? Would that quantify? Okay. I'm going to leave the public comment period open while we have the presentation, so. All right. Moving on to item three, we have the information consent calendar. Subject is the minutes of the meeting of April 20th, 2021. And, I guess that's it, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Forgot what page it's on. All right, so looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lozano.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I roll call, please?
Board Member Sandu.
Aye.
Board Member Papino.
Aye.
Board Member Vandenberg.
Aye.
Board Member Lozano.
Aye.
Board Member Farmer.
Aye. Approved 5-0. Moving on to item four, departmental. Again, have public comment period open if you'd like to comment on this item. First item is B, subject resolution of the successor agency approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for July 2022 to 2023. Mr. Heinz?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is an annual process that we go through related to our successor agency. Tonight, we have two items. We have the annual ROPS that we pass every year, but we also have the last and final. And so we're hoping to get the last and final approved tonight, and that will minimize, if not eliminate, the annual process. And our consultant here will explain both of these items to you, and we're looking for an eye vote on both of these. But let's start with 4B.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Tara Matthews, and I work with RSG. And we've been your successor agency consultants, I'm going to go for six or seven years now, so not from the beginning of time, but for quite a while. And so I'm really happy to be here tonight to present on both the ROPS, but in particular, your last and final ROPS. I know it's been a few headaches here and there with your succession, success, successor agency and the wind down of the former redevelopment agency affairs. So, as Mr. Heinz had mentioned, so what's unusual about this evening is that you have two ROPS before you. So, we have the annual ROPS, so that's a process that all successor agencies throughout the state of California and the wind down affair of the redevelopment agencies have to do in order to get all of their enforceable obligations or former redevelopment agency debts repaid. And so this is not the first time this has come before you, but what's new is that we're also doing this last and final as well. So I'll, I'll talk a little bit about both. The reason that we do an annual and a last and final is that both of these actions have to be approved by the successor agency. As most successor agency items, they also have to be approved by the county oversight board. And then those all have to be approved by the State Department of Finance. And so when we do the last and final ROPS, we also do an annual just in case somebody doesn't want to approve the last and final ROPS. So we can still have the annual ROPS to fall back on to make sure that for the upcoming fiscal year that all of those enforceable obligations can be repaid. So, I think I'll start with the annual ROPS, since it's something that you're more kind of familiar with. So, you know, the annual ROPS that's being presented to you tonight is basically asking for about $550,000. And all of the remaining obligations that the successor agency has is related to debt service payments on tax allocation bonds and related trustee and continuing disclosure fees, along with an admin allocation that the successor agency is allowed to collect for the wind down activities. So, that's a good position when the successor agencies are in that position to also consider potentially doing a last and final ROPS. And the annual ROPS before you also includes a request for a $250,000 administrative budget. That's similar to what has been asked in previous years, and is the maximum that is allowed by the law. Though, there's also a process that with the last and final will be eliminated, but with an annual ROPS, there's, we have to do what's called a prior period adjustment. So every October, we submit, RSG works with your finance department, and we take a look at all the expenditures from the successor agency that has to get submitted to the county auditor controller. And basically, if we ask for $10, but we only spent $8, they do the accounting, and they'll take that extra $2 that they gave you and apply that to a future distribution for payments to pay off the enforceable obligations on the ROPS. So in the last cycle, that was taken care of. They also take a look at, is there any other funds that the agency has received that could be used to also pay down enforceable obligations? So that's things like loan receivables, or interest, or other things like that. So in the case of GALT on the annual ROPS, there's an amount of about $124,000 and identified other funds that will likely be used to apply to future debt service payments or payments on your enforceable obligations. So now I'll kind of switch to, and I should note that in your packets you have not only the ROPS, but the associated administrative budgets that accompany each one of the ROPS. I think one of the things that you'll notice is that the administrative budget for the last and final ROPS is much less than the annual ROPS. And that's largely due to the fact of, you know, with the last and final, the administrative burden on city staff is significantly less. You don't have to go through that prior period adjustment that I was just speaking about on an annual basis anymore. They are very time-consuming. And so all of that stuff gets trued up at the end of the last and final ROPS. Also, final ROPS is just a way to say, we're listing all of your obligations. And when it's debt service payments, those are pretty standard. You guys just refinanced your bonds, right? And so all of those debt service payments are listed, and they're, they, everybody just knows what amount of money is going to come in. So that administratively is less time-consuming. And so DOF has typically, with most of our clients that have chosen to do last and final ROPS, have allowed an admin allocation of about $5,000 to $6,000 on an annual basis. So the admin budget for the last and final ROPS is reflecting that amount. You'll notice that the admin budget for the last and final ROPS does include a higher amount in the last year, which is 2034, will be when the successor agency or the former redevelopment agency is finally dissolved. And that is because there are some steps in the law that reports and a couple little audits that have to be submitted to basically wipe everything out and be done. The last and final ROPS is requesting a total of $3.8 million. And again, the majority of that is coming from just debt service payment on your tax allocation bonds. And then a small portion of about $81,000 is just for the administrative allocation to the successor agency for the, you know, limited amount of work that would happen after the last and final ROPS is submitted. If the successor agency approves both of these items tonight, then they will go to the county wide oversight board at the January 10th meeting for approval. And then from that point, it gets submitted to the California Department of Finance for their review and approval. And sometimes, with the last and final ROPS, you know, quite honestly, for a lot of our clients, we've sent them the same documents multiple times. But they will go through and take another look at all the debt service schedules and all of that stuff, just to make sure that they have everything documented to be able to attach to the last and final ROPS and get that approval. So, I think that concludes my presentation, unless you have any specific questions about either one of the items.
So Mayor, if I may, essentially, because of the redevelopment agency, and I'm going to need your, your assistance here on Exhibit A. Little, small writing here. The total outstanding debt or obligation is 7.1 million. Is that correct? And I'm looking at the, the current year ROPS. And so that 7.1 million is made up of the individual amounts below it. And so we have to, under the normal ROPS, we're provided an allowance of dollars that we can use to bring, to pay that debt down. And so every year, we'll come to you with some amount somewhere between $530,000 and $600,000 to keep bringing that amount down. And so this becomes an annual exercise. And so what we're proposing to do is do that annual exercise, just like we've done every year. But we're also proposing to do a last and final. And the last and final essentially is the council adopting this annual exercise until 2034, I believe. And so it makes the process a little more efficient. And so, again, it's one less thing we have to bring before you. I can tell you, the last and final is a tough thing to get. Tough thing to get through the Department of Finance. Let's just say, I tried that at a previous city, and we were unsuccessful. So I was very pleased to see that, that Finance had let GALT do such a thing. Because again, once we approve it, then those payments are just made.
And you won't have to talk about this until 2034, and the debts will be repaid, and it'll just be the final wind down of the former redevelopment agency. I should also mention that a last and final ROPS can be amended twice. So from, you know, let's just say you want to, if the bonds allow for it, I can't recall, you know, let's just say you want to refinance those bonds in five years. You can amend the ROPS and go through the process to amend that last and final ROPS.
So Mr. Heinz, what are the negatives of doing this? None?
We've got to do this. We've got to make payments to bring down that successor agency or that redevelopment. We've got to do that. Every, every year, that payment has to be made. And it's because of the tax allocation bonds that were issued by that RDA. And so that's a bond payment that we have to continue paying down. Now, this year, we were fortunate enough to re, actually refund that, that bond. So we're actually able to bring the, the interest down and make it a little more manageable. We actually have some savings, but we still have to pay it. And so this allows us to, instead of paying it on an annual basis and bringing that payment back to you all annually, we'll do that this year, but we'll also do the last and final where that payment is essentially authorized, correct me if I'm wrong, until 2034.
Yeah, it really reduces the administrative burden on staff. So that's the pro. The con to it is it does reduce the amount of administrative allocation that you're allowed to collect. So those are kind of the two things that are looked at, but it really does just simplify the process. And it's not, you know, it doesn't have to come here, and then go to the oversight board, and then go to DOF, and go through all that review process every year. And then, like I said, the nice part is, is that you don't have to do that PPA, right? So it's like, kind of like the true-up of, we gave you this amount, how much did you spend? That does happen at the end, so you definitely want to make sure you're maintaining really good financial records. But it really eliminates a lot of that.
So I just, I mean, just for the public, because it's not like we're locking ourselves into something that we're taking a risk that if we wait and just re-up this every year, that we could get like a lower rate on something or whatever. This is just, this, and this number's been determined what we owed, has to be paid back, it's fixed, doesn't matter. It's just, that's the number, the number's a number, right?
Right, and if, you know, if for any reason circumstances change, right? Like I said, if you want to refinance those bonds again or something, you do have the ability to amend the last and final ROPS up to two times during the remaining period.
So our, our administrative payment is currently at $250,000 a year, as you see with the, the, the annual ROPS. Now, when we do the last and final, that administrative payment goes down, I saw 5,500, is that?
That's like, yeah.
Yeah, 5,500, because of just what's, what our consultant mentioned, there's less administrative burden. So therefore, those dollars, in, in the eyes of Finance and the county oversight board, it's not $250,000 a year. It's 5,500. And, and so that's the, that's kind of the main difference between the, the two.
That's really the main pro.
Yeah.
Other than that, we're paying it whether we like it or not.
You got it.
That's, we can save the money or not save the money.
Yes.
And then I should mention, so how does solution work? So even just the reduced administrative money that was coming directly to you, that difference does get distributed back to all of the taxing entities, including the city's general fund. So instead of having it be marked just for successor agency admin, your portion, you know, if you have the 1% tax rate breakdown, I don't remember that offhand, but that would come back to you and to the city's general fund, and then all the other taxing entities. We get their share of that as well.
Do we have any public comment online?
Do not.
Okay. All right, well, if you want to make a public comment, you can do so, raise your hand or call in. I'll be wrapping that up here in a minute. So, is that it for the, so we both covered both items?
Yeah.
All right, so if there is no public comment in the room, and there's no public comment online, Ms. Hubert, none?
None.
All right, I'm going to close the public comment on this item. Thank you, ma'am, for your presentation. Thank you. And can we just do these together, or do you do them individually, Frank?
You can, you can attempt to do them together if, if there's five votes for it.
Okay, all right. Well, then I would, would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the recognized obligation payment schedule for the period of July 2022 to June 2023, ROPS 2223 pursuant to the requirements of the Redevelopment Disillusion Act, and adopt a resolution approving and adopting the last and final recognized obligation payment schedule for the period ending July 2022 to June 2034, last and final ROPS pursuant to the requirements of the Redevelopment Disillusion Act. I'm making a motion for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Vandenberg. Can I have a roll call, please?
Board Member Sandu.
Aye.
Board Member Papino.
Aye.
Board Member Vandenberg.
Aye.
Board Member Lozano.
Aye.
And Board Member Farmer.
Aye. Items, both items approved 5-0. All right, thank you. Moving on to, we will now adjourn our, from the GALT Successor Agency, and we will reconvene to the GALT City Council. All right, moving on to item L, City Clerk's Report. First item is going to be the review of city committees and commissions. Ms. Hubert?
Okay, so annually, city council will discuss this. On November 7th, 2017, city council directed staff to place on the agenda on an annual basis during the month of December, a review of standing committees and commissions. As you recall, in December of 2019, city council asked to hear from the committee and commissions twice a year, but due to COVID and the meetings not being held, that was tabled. And now that the committees and commissions are somewhat back to normal and now meeting, that request will be implemented in 2022. So, other than that, did you have any other questions or review?
I, I would, I have one thought on this. I would like to see if we could have, if it's possible, from a legal standpoint, and kind of maybe deterring from policy, or looking to deter from policy with these commissions. As it pertains to social media, I've had the Youth Commission and the Commission on Aging specifically. It's not so much planning or Parks and Rec or any of those, but it depends on which commission. But those are the two that have, that have wanting to really up their activity. And they have, especially the Youth Commission, and we found that the, the current procedure where things have to go through the clerk are sort of cumbersome in interacting with the community. It's easy for posts, you know, posting a date, like a cleanup day for the beautification, for example. But I know I experienced this myself before with beautification, where people would message and say, what time do we supposed to show up tomorrow? Or what do we need to bring? And of course, you know, Tina's not working on a Friday evening, so she should not respond. So there's kind of a breakdown in, in her participation. So I'm just wondering, you know, I understand there has to be protocols in place, but I'm thinking, you know, if we trust these people, especially our Youth Commission, which are future leaders, if we trust them to do certain things, I would think that maybe these committees, this is just an idea, could look at maybe assigning a, a public relations person, or a PRO, whatever you want to call it, within that, that is, that is, that person specifically handles the social media for that particular commission or committee. And again, it's not going to be all of them, I think it's only probably a couple. And maybe that person could be trained on the parameters of what they can and can't do, and so forth. So it's just an idea. I feel like, you know, we're in 2021 here. I feel like it's just the whole process, the way it's been existing for the last three years or so, it's really slow. So, just an idea, maybe just to look into it, and see if it's something we can change, or it can't be because of legality, I don't know. So just an idea, maybe just to look into it and see if it's something we can change or it can't be because of legality, I don't know.
Is there any thoughts on that, Frank?
I don't know. I don't know of any legal issues. Obviously you have, um, the new legislation that's a year or two old that talks about use of social media by committee members or commission members. So that would apply, um, but they can still respond to questions by constituents directly on social media, just can't communicate with each other. So assuming we can stay within those parameters, um, it's just a question of implementation and whatever, whatever the policy goals or objectives are. But I don't see any, uh, red flags as long as the, just as long as the current social media rules, um, are followed, just like this council has to follow and all of the committees have to follow.
Yeah, and it wasn't, I, I don't even foresee, there's only like two or three that I foresee even interested, but mainly I'm just using the Youth Commission as an example, but I had, on our cleanup day on Saturday, had both of them really say, you know, you know, it'd be nice if we could, you know, be more proactive cause they're, they're trying to gather more, uh, support and more help on things and they feel like having to put everything through the clerk and stuff. Some, sometimes it become cumbersome, no, no disrespect to Tina that she's slow or anything, but she has a lot on her plate. I just feel like the process and how social media is such a quick interaction type thing where people, you know, could comment on a post and then somebody could respond back and say, thanks for your help, yes, join us tomorrow for blah blah. And that that whole process has to go through Tina, I just, so that's my only thought. Maybe it, maybe the changes that we're able to implement are not really helpful, but maybe they're really helpful. I don't know, but it's just an idea, I, I'd promise that I would bring, I would, uh, promise the young folks I would bring that up.
I, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, I'm generally okay with, uh, giving the committees the flexibility, uh, to do what they need to do. Um, I do think that, uh, Clerk Hubert should have some role in the oversight, um, uh, even if it's after the fact. Um, and also, the only, the thing that, I, I love the idea, the only thing that I'm worried about is being able to give direction to commission and committee members as to posts they don't need to respond to. Uh, because it's sort of the wild, wild west out there. And while we think everyone's intentions are good, there will been, inevitably be someone who will, who will post. And I, I don't want, and it's the Youth Commission I'm most concerned about.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, we need to at least let them know, all right, we expect you to respond to, uh, the cordial and courteous, um, replies. But if anybody's out of line, obscene, um, you don't need to respond to those, so.
Well, we've definitely had, we've had some instances where we've had people on commissions and committees or in appointed positions with the city have some, you know, concerning social media stuff we've dealt with, but that's why I was thinking it, it needs to be somebody's, somebody, if, if, if said committee or commission decides that they want to be active.
Yeah.
Um, that they would, they would designate somebody on their committee as that person to do it. And then that person could work with Tina about, here's the parameters.
Yeah.
And Tina could still have oversight and, and be watching those. And if there's anything that she seems, then Tina has a point of contact on the committee and says, no, don't do that or whatever. So I think if we just narrow it down to one person, it's not just anybody on there can just start throwing, then I think it would just get out of hand. I mean, do you have any thoughts, Tina, on how?
No, that's fine. And honestly, um, since we've had kind, Amy's taken over, I haven't even received any emails from the Youth Commission, so.
Well, one thing they talked about is being more active on social media. So I think it kind of went a little dormant on it and they're just like, we want to really ramp up. They feel like that's, that's the way to really make the most of them. And, and I know the commission has been talking about it too and, um, strangely enough, but the Commission on Aging, um, but beautification definitely. I mean, I know their, I don't know their status because I'm not on that anymore, but I just know from my experience with that, it was cumbersome to, uh, to get involvement, so.
As long as they know Brown Act violations, you know, what can happen, so.
Yeah, and, and so, so maybe we could just lay out, maybe, maybe the next step would be just to, and then maybe we already have something where we have like a certain parameter of the do's and don'ts of social media and, and when each, it, well, if we decide that each committee is allowed to do that, then there would be parameters, okay, you can designate somebody and that somebody has to then come to the clerk and has to be, go through those things or something. So I just want to talk, come up with the idea, just want to get the ball rolling is all.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a great idea. Um, what I would suggest is that we allow the commissions and committees and maybe, Tina, you can, I'm sorry, Clerk, Clerk Hubert, you can get the information out, that perhaps the committees can select who that PIO person will be. And then we can invite the PIO and the Chair of the Committee and to meet with, uh, Clerk Hubert and our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez, um, who is also our PIO. Um, and perhaps even, um, Rachel, um.
Hanson.
Hanson from the PD, who's the PIO of the PD. And that way, they are sort of already locked into the city's messaging system as it stands. And they kind of understand what the standards are and how we operate as a city. And then, and then we'll basically allow them to go do what they do now that they understand the framework that they're operating within.
Okay.
So if that, that works for you, we can, we can, once they designate their folks, we'll just have them come in, we'll sit down and meet and here's how the, here's how the city does business.
And especially, we have to order all the committee and commission, not just one or two. If they want to do it, that's fine, if they don't want to do it, so just offer all, all the committee and commissions.
Mm-hmm.
Cause I think there's obviously a certain, a certain, certain understanding of what's expected of these people too. I mean, not to say that everybody is always obliging to everything, cause like I said, we've had a couple. But I think generally speaking, these people, we've entrusted, they've took an oath, they, you know, hopefully they all understand what they're doing in these roles as their appointment and what that appointment. And I think generally speaking, ninety-nine percent of the time, you're going to be people that are going to act professionally and, and do those things, so.
And, and again, Mayor, I'm not concerned about our, our commissions and committees members. And I, I know we have some issue with a couple of them.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm more afraid of what, and I'm probably overly afraid because the kids operate in this world. But now that they're operating as our sort of, our liaison, I want them to be able to respond to the negative element that's out there, that's eventually going to show up.
Or how to report something, that, or to report something to Tina.
You got it.
This person commented on here and they can report that. Or maybe Tina, if she's observed, she could see that and she can remove, you know, obviously the, I, I think ideally we have a dual admin type thing, like Tina's an admin on the page, on every page, and then we have the PIO be an admin on each. That way there's dual, both two eyes looking, yeah, okay.
That's, that's what I'm worried about.
Okay. All right, is that sound, I mean, is that okay with looking at something, doing something like that and seeing what?
Yeah, I think that's, that's another great way to help, you know, outreach to the citizens, which is always a struggle. My biggest concern is, is breaking the Brown Act, not that, you know, the hammer comes down every day on that situation, but it's very easy to violate that on Facebook or social media. I mean, me replying to another council member just with a like, just pressing the like button is technically a violation if it's anything to do with business, you know, just your normal, everyday life, that's fine, but. So it's very easy to fall into that. You just read something, you press like almost out of habit and that, I think, you know, that's my big.
From a Youth Commission standpoint, it was more like, hey, we're looking for volunteers to come join us at our next, you know, or join the Youth Commission, this is what we're about. It's more about putting the word, it's not so much talking business. I mean, the business that they talk about and votes that they make are not something they would post on social media. So I'm just using that committee as an example.
No, I know, but to the, you know, city manager's point, people get, uh, pulled into conversations very easily. You're emotionally attached to it and that's just always going to be a concern.
Yep, understood. Does anybody else have any, uh, any concerns or things that they, um, would like to see changed or revised as we discuss these committees and commissions?
I, I have two things, if I may. Um, first of all, with the, uh, social media thing, I think it's a great idea, especially for those who, uh, want to get the information out on these committees. I think it's awesome. Um, the one thing I would caution is just maybe figuring out a way to come up with some protocol or some standard as to what's inappropriate and what's not, uh, to respond to. And again, I, I'm not saying people aren't bright, uh, but my standard of what is, uh, you know, attacking or, or, or appropriate may be different than someone else's and so. Uh, and with like Councilmember Vandenberg said, I mean, sometimes, you know, people just do things because that's what they're doing, right? And they're, they're not even thinking. And so I've seen some things on social media where I went, oh my gosh, I'd never used that language in front of my grandmother, but they're using it on social media. So, uh, you know, for, to, to come up with in that protocol, you know, what is appropriate to respond to, what's not. Um, and so that, that I think is important, especially if, uh, some of our youth are going to be, uh, you know, in charge or, or, or maybe potentially the information officers for that committee, so. Uh, but we definitely have some quality folks that I think would do a good job getting that info out. And I think the one, you know, the one, uh, way this is going to help is that, you know, if you have an event going on and it's Saturday morning and it gets rained out, you have to have somebody be able to get on there and, and post that stuff. And I think, uh, that's one example of how it would work. Um, in reviewing the, the committees and commissions, I, I've always kind of struggled with this and I don't even know if it's a thing. So I just wanted to ask my colleagues about it. There are some committees where we have, um, a council member assigned to that committee as part of the appointments, right? And then there are some where we have two. I'm wondering if there shouldn't be a way to standardize this. To say, you know, this person is going to be the liaison to this committee from the council. Understanding that these committees are, are, uh, you know, committees that we put together so that they can advise us on issues, right? But maybe having that one person, I think this came up a few meetings ago where we talked a little bit about that.
And some don't have any.
And some have none, right.
The beautification doesn't have a council member and neither does the commi, neither does the Commission on Aging.
Well, I'll give you an example, and I love the Public Safety Committee, but we have, this is one, I think the only one where we have two council members. And, uh, and, and all of these other people involved, now, I get that that's public safety and you need the fire chief and the police chief or designee got that. But then you go over to the Park and Recreation Commission that has none. And so I know.
Is that the difference between a commission and a committee maybe, or is there any, is there any pattern there or not, or it doesn't matter?
No, because, yeah, no, there's, there's not.
And actually, we have the GALT Youth Commission and the Public Safety Committee on our next report cause they're techn, cause it is classified as a different agency you're representing on that committee. So on the, on this actual staff report there, it's just the members you've appointed, if that makes sense.
No, I, I, I see what you're saying, but I'm just.
Yeah, I, so.
You know, on this report, there's actually, those committees are listed as well. So I just, you know, again, I don't even know if it's a thing.
No, it is though.
Um, we, we, we all seem to cover everything that we need to, um, but, uh, so I don't know. I, I just kind of throw that out to, to bring some more, you know, just try to standardize it and then maybe get, um, all of our committees and commissions an opportunity to have, um, somebody report back regularly on it. Um, and again, I don't have an interest in extending meetings or doing anything like that, but if something comes up, that's important.
Yeah, no, I think.
Probably should know about it.
And I think, Rich, what makes sense with your saying is because we all have to be appointed to all these different things and it's a lot to, to do amongst all of us, right? And some of us are on multiple, um, you know, so to why we have two? I'm not saying that we all should, they should all have one because I don't really know if we need a council member on the commission, uh, on the Parks and Rec or the beautification. I think that those are just fine, but I, I think it's weird that we have two and then not another. So maybe we just, the ones we decide that it is important to have a council member on, we just have one. And we have like an alternate or something, right? That if that person can't make it, the person can show up or something. And then on the ones where there's none, we can decide, well, maybe that's fine if they have none, they don't need, we don't need them.
Yeah, yeah, again, I just bring it up just.
So with that, with that being said, we have the next, the next item on the agenda is to discuss those appointments. Should we consider this before we make those appointments? Because, um, that would be something, we're getting ready to do that. Should this be something we should, I mean, I don't want to push this off, I want to get this off, you know, I know Mr. Heinz wants to get this done off the agenda and other agendas that are full of stuff, so, but.
I, I, I don't know that it's that important to do, um, but I just think as we go through this next year, at least start looking at that to see if maybe the Park and Recreation Commission as a council member assigned and that person also does, um, beautification or something like that.
Yeah.
But in the interim, you know, um.
I think I liked it, the fact that we have, we've actually asked that they come back and report more frequently. I think that by having them report more frequently, like by policy, keeps us informed and there's like less need for us to be on there, I think. Um, I'll be honest, I think it is, I mean, I don't think there's really a need for two people to be on the public safety. I mean, just saying, I mean, we don't even meet that often, so, um, I mean, we like, meet like every other month, I believe, so, uh.
And that may be a bylaw thing with that committee too. So I mean, you know, there's.
May be, and having come from Planning Commission, which is dictated more by state law as how we function, um, it was independent reporting to.
Yeah.
Greg Hoffman, um, and I like the independence of some of the commissions and have actually heard from people on commissions that have, uh, council present, that they don't feel free to speak. And that they don't feel that the administrator is free to speak because of that. And that might be something, you know, worth considering that, you know, they're independent, they work with Director Solis or Director Hoffman or what have you, and then, you know, come back as often as needed to report to us collectively.
That's, that's a good point, I, I didn't think about that.
Council member driving the commission.
What, what is the, uh, what commit, what commissions and committees do we have council members appointed to? I know Public Safety.
Yeah.
And the Youth Commission.
Yes.
And Cast, but the Cast is different, that's.
Yeah, tho, those are the outside agents.
Right, so as far as internal commissions and committees, it's just the Youth Commission and, uh, and the Public Safety, is that it?
Correct.
That's it, huh? Huh, so it's just the two. So I think the discussion here is, do we need one or do we need any? Or do we, I mean, I definitely don't think we need two, but I mean, do we need, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, what are your thoughts?
I may, if I may, just suggest a structure for the five of you to discuss. Um, in the cities I've been in, it, the emphasis has really been on for those committees and commissions to be citizen-led because they are advisory committees to you all or collectively as a body. And so what I have seen is citizen-led committees with council liaisons. And so those liaisons are just in the room to provide the perspective of, and the parameters of council. In case you've got a member that says, hey, let's just do this. The liaison is saying, well, we can't do that because that's not legal. Um, and that's not something that we want to see or not really interested as a council. Um, but they're there to kind of set those parameters, but not necessarily stifle the conversation because we want to hear from you. And, but if the leadership of those organizations is all citizens and we're just in the room as liaisons, non-voting members, then I think it frees up the conversation a little bit more. Um, that's, I've seen it work in other cities, it seems to work well, um, once a year and sometimes twice a year. We have the committees come back and report, report out. The only member of the council that probably knows what's in that report is the liaisons because it's expected that the liaisons will help the committees craft that proposal. Because the strategic plan that we're going to talk about probably at our next meeting, you know that that's our overall parameter. And so as the council, and I'm just giving an example, as the council liaison, okay, the, the, sort of the objective, one of the objectives is, here's our strategic plan, here's the game plan going forward from the five of us. So what you do as a committee needs to not only innovate, but also show how that innovation fits within these parameters. If we've forgotten something, you need to tell us. So, but you need to give them the freedom to let them be creative.
And I think, and I think what's strange is you do have some pretty different parameters, like for example, the Youth Commission, which I'm on. It is more of a, like, I'm just in there and the, the younger just kind of lead the meeting, right? But on the other side, like the Public Safety, you know, I'm the Chair of the Public Safety, so not only am I there, but I'm actually running the meeting. So it's like totally opposite. So maybe we need to look at like Public Safety, where Public Safety is, maybe we just have one liaison from council, but that, and they're just there, they're not the Chair. Like the Chair has to be someone from the committee and not a council member. So maybe there needs to be some different parameters set up with that committee, for example, or, or to keep them consistent. So I do agree with having somebody present, a council member in those two, which are the only two we do. But I think it needs to be uniform where we have one each and they're just present, but they're not taking a leadership role kind of thing, so I don't know.
And that way it is truly citizen-driven.
Yeah.
That, the way, you know, I mean, the Planning Commission, for example, elected a, a president and they, they're running the meeting and the advisory. and the advisory part of that comes from the planning director. Yeah, I think that's a good, a good model.
So should we, would that be us providing direction that we want to make those changes right now? Is that kind of what we're thinking?
Yeah, and then we would have to bring it back because it would be a municipal code change.
Was that something we want, do we, are we kind of on the train of thought of that or is that not everybody's a little?
No, I like that idea, but I, checking our code is, you know, vital.
Okay, so we can look into that and come back and see if that's something we can do?
I'd like to make one more point before it passes by. As far as any individual breaking Brown Act, is there any like, I wouldn't want to say, you know, pay for the academy for everyone, but maybe something that they sit down just internally and watch like this YouTube video, like this is, you know, some standard practice, so everybody's told the same thing.
Well, the League of Cities, but I could register people for that.
Right, so you could replace it. That's why I'm saying, keep it more internal, but have a standard format. You tell everybody like, this is what, you know, you can and can't do so that-
I think the city attorney probably has some training that we can avail.
Yeah, well, I know that for AB 1234, all of the committee and council members are required to take that. That two-hour training covers Brown Act and at least the training that I do covers that social media piece too. So we could fold that into the training or point to other resources we have through our firm. So I think we can make it happen.
Okay, very good.
So for follow-up, we're bringing back a social media policy for the committees and commissions with Brown Act training. And then the municipal code changes for the non-voting members for public safety.
For youth commission and public safety.
Yeah, public safety.
Those are the only two that we have council appointments.
I'd be good with that. I know my conversations start out the opposite direction, but you guys certainly came up with some good points, and I think that's going to be important moving forward, so.
Now, with the municipal code on public safety, going down to one city council member, non-voting, are you still looking at all the other designees?
I believe so. We have fire, we have PD, and then we have a public work. Some of the, sometimes, some of those are not there. I mean, public works is sometimes there, but I don't know all the time. And then we have the other just-
Fire chief?
Yeah, I said fire, fire, fire PD. And then we, I think, I'm not sure if public works is all there. Sometimes they're not there, but then we had the citizens, however many that is, I forget. But there's plenty. Yeah, I think, because it's public safety, I definitely think fire and PD need to be, you know, it's important that they're there. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I think not. So this is an action item, so.
May I just ask for clarification, Clark Huber, if it's okay, Mayor? You mentioned a social media policy. I think you were just referring to, just to be clear, the council's consensus direction on creating that PIO type of person and working on that and bringing that back. I think the city already has an existing social media policy, so actually working with that person to make sure they follow not just the standards of the other PIOs, but they also use the, use the media consistent with our city's social media policy. Okay?
Okay. All right, so we got to ask for public comment on this item before we move on. Is there any public comment online, Tina?
There is not.
Okay, and we have no speaker sheets in the room?
No.
Okay, if you wish to comment on this item, which is the review of the city commissions and committees, if you're watching online, you may raise your hand on Zoom or you can call in. I'm going to give you a little bit of time here to do that. All right, we're going to close the public comment period here in about five seconds. Any hands raised online, Tina?
No hands raised.
All right, okay, I'm going to close the public comment on this item. And we were going to move on to item L2, which is review council appointments to local and regional boards, commissions, and committees.
Okay, so I'm going to go through this one, but again, this might change based on our previous agenda report. But again, on November 7th, 2017, council requested an annual review every December of its appointments to local and regional bodies. So attached to the agenda report was each board and the local and outside agencies. So I'm just going to go through it one by one, and the council members can say they want to continue to serve or ask another council member to serve. So the first one is the CSD two by two. We have Rich Lozano and Paul Sandu.
I would like to continue to serve and just as a side note, ask my colleagues if there's anything they would like to bring up. We have a meeting in February.
Like to continue.
Next, I don't know if you've met, Stephanie's not here, but the 457 deferred compensation plan, we have Jay Vandenberg.
I would like to continue to serve.
Okay, cities and schools together cast, we have Sean Farmer, Kevin Papino, and Jay Vandenberg is alternate.
Yeah, I'd like to continue on that. We haven't even had our first one yet. It's supposed to be February, I think. We got an email.
Yeah, and I'd like to continue also.
Okay.
You wish to still be alternate?
Yes. Yes, I'll continue to be alternate. Thank you.
So GALT Youth Commission, and again, this is a non-voting member, Sean Farmer.
That's fine.
Public Safety, this one depending, we have two, Sean Farmer and Paul Sandu.
Yeah, and if we, I'm fine with, if we go down to one on that, which is the one we might be changing, I'm fine with letting Paul have that or remain, it doesn't matter to me either way. I mean, I think we've both been a part of that for a long time, so I'm part of five things already. I think you are too. I don't care.
I continue, but we will make a decision whatever.
You want, can we, can we wait to decide on that to see what happens if it's going to go to one?
Table public safety. Okay, and then these are the outside agencies. The city selection committee is concurrent with mayor term, so that's Mayor Farmer. Greater Sacramento Economic Council, that is city manager. SACOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, we have Rich Lozano and Kevin Papino is alternate.
I would like to continue.
Okay. Sacramento County Criminal Justice Court, that is the chief of police. The mayor has the appointment to keep that or change it.
That's fine.
Sacramento homeless policy, Sean Farmer.
Yes, that's fine as well.
LAFCO, it's not our appointment. It goes City of Rancho Cordova till December 2022. Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, we have Kevin Papino and Jay Vandenberg is alternate.
I'll continue.
Likewise.
Okay. Sacramento Metro Cable Television Commission, we share that. That's Rancho's appointment right now. Sacramento Public Library Authority, Sean Farmer, and the alternate is City of Vailton.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can continue on that unless somebody else wants to take it. I've actually, I've missed a couple of meetings, like not back-to-back, but it's been tough with my schedule for their meetings are usually Thursday, like afternoons at three, and for some reason it just, I don't know. But I'm fine to continue. I mean, I've been on there. It's actually a great committee, so I'll be, I'll keep on it.
Okay. Sacramento Transportation Authority, Paul Sandu and Sean Farmer is alternate.
I will continue.
Yeah, which one is that?
Transportation.
Sacramento Transportation Authority? Lost. I don't know. Oh, I'm the alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I don't recall. Yeah, I'm fine with alternate, yeah.
And then the South Sacramento Conservation Agency, we have Paul Sandu and Jay Vandenberg is alternate.
I will continue.
Likewise.
Okay.
That's okay.
So everything is the same and we will table public safety.
Okay. All right, is there any public comment on this item? Any public comment online or on Zoom?
No, we do not.
All right, if you have a public comment on this item, please do so now. We're going to move on to our next item. About 20 more seconds.
Mayor, while we're doing the countdown, can I invite the staff to come join us so we can do the comments by staff?
Yep. All right, going to go ahead and close the public comment. There's no public comment?
No, there's not.
All right, closing the public comment, going to move on to item M, comments by staff. Mr. Heinz?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comment from me in particular. I would like to sort of pass the baton over to Director Solis, who has some good news for us tonight.
So we received a $100 donation from LaHeim and Gail Weber to our GALT Parks and Recreation Scholarship Fund. It is to help low-income families, to provide them sports, so I'd like to thank them. And then we also applied for a grant through the state to receive home testing kits, COVID testing kits. So we were approved today. I don't have any really details of how we're going to distribute them or where we're going to do that. We got that news late this afternoon, but I wanted to make you aware of that as we're entering this holiday season since we won't see you for about a month. Once we get information of how we're going to distribute those, Lorenzo, excuse me, the city manager, will let you know how we're going to do that. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, you as well.
All righty. Thank you, Director Solis. Next up, we have our Community Development Director, Craig Hoffman, and perhaps Police Chief Kalinowski to speak to some of the issues that have popped up over the last couple of weeks regarding the homeless.
Yeah, good evening, council members. I think you've been seeing a number of posts taking place on social media. For the last three weeks, we've been monitoring and working with the property owners over at Crystal and Bosso. We were, that's a property owner. They don't live in town, and so it's been challenging to get ahold of them. But we did that. We were able to get the site posted. We were able to get an authorization letter that allowed us to enforce trespassing on-site, and the police department was out today. I can tell you that from a code enforcement standpoint and a police department standpoint, we're definitely going to have to start taking a look at a lot of our vacant properties, make sure that they have the signage available, and make sure that we have the authorization to enforce trespassing because it's the start of the season. And so working with the homeless issues, making sure that we're working with the campers that seem to be taking place within the city and making sure that we're enforcing all of our codes and regulations. But that did take place today, and so I think you're going to see those folks dispersing that was on Crystal and Bosso. If there's any questions you might have for me, it's, we see the social media posts and we understand the concerns of the community. It's not something we want to see in establishment taking place in town.
If I, if I may, just sort of to piggyback, I'll be sending some information to the council regarding policies, our policies regarding, policies and limitations regarding dealing with this particular issue. And because I wanted to make sure you're all informed that there are forces outside of GALT that are driving how we respond to these particular issues. And we are doing the best that we can to respond to these things within those parameters set by the courts and various other entities.
Yeah, we, I think we understand, we, this has been ongoing, prior to Chief Kalinowski, Chief Stockman was very good about keeping us informed at council meetings about those parameters, and we understand the challenges. You guys have gotten real creative with working with those parameters, so thank you for that. I do want to say, big thank you to you and your staff and for, and everybody else being so proactive, especially TJ. I mean, I'll see a post on social media about something and I'll literally, he'll text me like five minutes later and be like, I'm already on it. I've seen it. And I'm like, thank you. I mean, just super quick with code enforcement issues and stuff, so thank you.
TJ is awesome. Sorry, Brian, but he's awesome.
TJ is-
No, you're not.
TJ is trained by the illustrious GALT PD. That's one of the reasons why he's so effective.
That's what I meant. Happy holidays, happy new year to everyone. Look forward to working with you in 2022.
And so on that theme, I just want to say that we've been as creative as we can to get people moving along. And staff told me that actually one of our issues at Walnut in 99 was offered a box of donuts in lieu of moving. So we do not take just a law enforcement approach to getting folks, you know, out of harms way, i.e. the freeway. But we try to use the carrot in, the more of the carrot side when we can versus a stick approach on moving folks along. And we'll continue to do that because we need to make it uncomfortable. But the reality is with these groups that we've dealt with recently, they're all local, long-term folks that the PD's dealt with. I'm not sensing currently that we have folks from outside the community coming in and looking for a place to lay their head. And so that's something we'll continue to monitor closely because if that starts happening, I'll have some concerns with that. From the PD directly, just a couple of events that are coming up in January. After the first of the year, we have on January 15th, which is a Saturday, we'll have the Ninth Annual Ton Memorial Reef Posting and Events, and so we'll provide some more information. But that starts at about 11:30 at the Railroad Tracks with the 12 o'clock posting here at City Hall at the Monument. On the 20th of January, which is a Thursday, is scheduled for our annual awards ceremony. And it's going to be a significant event for the agency as we'll be awarding some Purple Hearts, obviously, to Officer Graywall's family and Officer Herrera will be present. We're going to be doing that event, and we will be sending out invitations to folks to attend an RSVP for that. And so you'll get some more information about that, but it's a lunchtime event. So that's going to be a hard time for the, it's going to be some great, some great things going on that day, but there's going to be some, some hard moments in that event too. So that's going to be very important for the organization. So those are the two things that are probably going to be happening in or around when we see you again on January 18th. So I want you to be aware of those beforehand. And then, of course, as others have said, you know, of course, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and wish you a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Director Selling, anything?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you, city manager. Just a couple of quick things. Number one, I just want to congratulate the council on approving the groundwater sustainability plan tonight. This is a culmination of probably about four years' worth of work. And Councilmember Vanderberg and I attended the second meeting of the Consumers Groundwater Authority yesterday getting some of the preliminary business off and running, so we've got a lot of work ahead this year. But it's definitely a major milestone, so I just wanted to express appreciation for that. And then the other thing, you know, it looks like we've got a lot of rain forecast over the next several days. I think it's good to see that we're in, into a wet pattern, so we definitely need the water. I think most of the leaves and stuff are down, so the storm drains are in good shape. I don't see any issues just hearing, you know, about the predictions so far kind of thing. We'll be keeping an eye on it, of course. We do have some sand out in front of the Public Works Department there and some bags. And I just would want to remind everyone that it's for GALT residents only. And hopefully the folks that have come already and gotten sand, you know, are the ones that really needed it. I don't expect that we'll have a big run on it, but just wanted to make folks aware of that, so it'll be out there. So with that, yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and look forward to next year. So, thank you.
Mr. Selling, I do have a question, just in case I forget. When you talk about storm drains, it remind me, and I was going to email, but, you know, I wasn't able to this last week. The leaves on Forest Street are pretty thick right there, especially by the drain. Tried to do as best I could, but I don't know if we can work together and-
Sure.
Before the storms come with their water.
Yeah, yeah, which drain, the one just right there?
Yeah, between Brewster's and the corner.
Okay.
It all goes down to that one drain. The leaves are super thick.
All right, okay.
Tried to clear, but it's, they're pretty heavy all the way down from all the trees.
I'll make a note of it and see if we can get some folks out there.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you, Director Selling. And by the way, thank you, Director Hoffman. I missed that earlier. City Attorney Frank Splendario, any?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
All righty. City Clerk Tina Huber?
Nothing further.
All right. Economic Development Manager- Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez had to leave earlier, and our also, Stephanie Van Stein, our Human Resources Director, excused her from this meeting. Other than that, I believe that concludes our comments. Hopefully, I didn't leave out anyone. And to all the folks out there, have a great Christmas, take care of yourselves, and take care of each other, and we'll see you back here in January.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll move on to comments by city council and future agenda items. We will start with Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me the opportunity to speak a couple of minutes, sir. I believe this is our last meeting of this year, and I'd like to thank you for the staff, especially from last two years, during very good, doing a very good job, very difficult time. And thank you for the public comments, especially Raf Cortez, Bob Elliot, and we have two individuals from GALT Herald, sitting down the whole time. And I also like to thank you, anybody was on, on the phone or the public comment. I did attend the Rotary Club, great turnout at the Rotary Christmas Dinner Box Distribution in partnership with the Sunrise Food Pantry at GALT United Methodist Church. Merry Christmas and Happy Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papino?
I'll keep it short. Been up here a year, and I gotta say, extremely pleased with the changes and the direction that each of our departments are going, and the city manager leading the ones that maybe don't quite have managers yet. But thank you all for all of your hard work, from you, all the way down to the newest person in your, your department, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I was remiss in, no, no questions, I was remiss in thanking Officer Small and his proactiveness, it's, please extend that to him. Thank you to all the staff, everybody that works for the city of GALT, down to the person that, you know, runs the Weed Eater, all the way up to the city manager, you know, I appreciate everybody's efforts in keeping this city running. I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and, you know, look around you this, in the coming days, and appreciate the people that are around you, even if they disagree with you, there's far more good in everybody than there is bad, and you just need to look for it and appreciate it. I know I've been focusing on it very much in the past month, so Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year, look forward to it.
Thank you, well said. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, I'm just gonna reiterate a lot of what my colleague said, but thank you to all the staff for all the work you do throughout the, throughout the year. It's been a tough year. Many of our departments have gone through a lot of change, I believe certainly all for the good, and I want to thank Mr. Heinz for his leadership, and his ability to problem-solve and do what's right for our citizens. So I also wanted to point out how available the last couple of weeks Mr. Selling and Mr. Hoffman have been to me. I've been a little needy, and I appreciate you guys willing to meet with me on a couple of different items and, and, you know, and follow up, so I appreciate that. I, too, attended the box, Christmas box giveaway with the vice mayor, and over 100 families were served with Christmas boxes. I think that was just amazing. I want to thank the Sunrise, GALT Sunrise Rotary, and GALT United Methodist Church for their efforts. And then I also attended the toy drive giveaway that was put together by a combination of PD, GALT Police Department staff and Consumers Fire Department staff. They did an excellent job, and I know, I talked to Laurel Shamber, and she was still giving bags away on Monday, and so, but everyone did a great job, it was great to see the chief out there, and Lieutenant Small, as well as the staff, and everybody did a wonderful job, and so thank you for that. Have a great holiday, and Merry Christmas to all, be safe, and we will see you back after the New Year. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Lozano. I just want to first echo, thanks to the staff for a year, it has been a tough year. I mean, hopefully, good things ahead for next year. I think we got, we all were able to tackle some challenging stuff, get through some things. I think we've got a lot accomplished, and I look forward to serving this next year, and hopefully, it's better days ahead for the community as far as the pandemic. I want to thank Mr. Cortez and Mr. Bellier for your comments, public comments always appreciated. I want to thank the CSD, GALT PD, and all the volunteers for the toy drive that Councilman Lozano mentioned. It looked like it was a great success, as it usually is, so thank you to all that donated, and all that were a part of that. I want to thank Andrea Johnson and Meals on Wheels, and also Commission on Aging for what they do, for the seniors, I was able to participate in that today. And it was, you know, what Councilmember Vandenberg kind of said reminded me of a post I put today, where, you know, I visited people that, this is the only visit they had in like, a long time, and you don't, you don't realize when you have a lot of people around you all the time, you take it for granted, but some of these people are very lonely in the holidays, they don't have family, and so what, what Andrea and her team do by delivering meals to those people, and giving them a friendly face and a visit, and I was able to experience that, was, was really good. I want to thank the Herberger family for 63 years serving GALT with the GALT, with the GALT Herald. The GALT Herald has officially changed ownership, and so the Herberger family will be stepping away from that. And like I said, they've served the community of GALT for 63 years, and I just wanted to mention them. Thank you to that, and I wish the paper success moving forward. And then, last but not least, Merry Christmas, everybody. Everybody be safe, have a good holiday, have, spend a good time with your family, and enjoy your New Year and your time off. So we'll see you next year. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:13. Good night.